If that's okay, call the meeting to order on Monday, September 26, 2022. Your city council meetings. So rise from the platform. Change of focus. Adam, I'll leave it to you. The ladies please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. While it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Ms. Pam, this call is noted that Mr. Cousins is not here.
Here, Fisher, yes, Griffin, here, Cover, here, Michelle.
How's it?
Heel.
Here.
Heating. Here, Dean Gregorian.
Here.
Thank you. Item C this evening is approval of the meeting minutes from September 12th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move through.
Please begin. Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Donna. It's Griffin. I'm counting on this.
The top of page three, just under upcoming meeting list, I think there's just a misspelling. Or does someone from trial towns will speak? I think it should be trial towns.
Yeah. Donna, anything?
No.
Any other council members? Okay, Ms. Pam, please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes.
Fisher, yes. Oram, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Griffin, yes. Cover, yes. Heel.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Hey, they're prearranged. Do you have a?
They did. They made it virtual.
Oh, they made it virtual. Okay, I can't see the screen actually, so. Who do we have online for our Girl Scout presentation?
We did it as Ella.
Okay, Ella Jensen. Do you need to unmute her or help her unmute?
Yeah.
I asked her to unmute. Okay, great.
Hello?
Good evening.
Evening.
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. Um, well, I'm Ella and the two other people here with me are Claire Benato and Amelia Stinnett.
Okay, councilors, your presentation. Thanks for joining us. We do have the slides.
What?
We do have the slides in the packet.
Okay. Give us one second, please. Hello. We are Girl Scout Troop 40500 and we'd like to present to you an idea for a community composting program in Dexter.
What does community composting look like? We would like to propose a composting center. At this facility, people would could bring over their compostable items where they'd be mixed into a large scale composter. The city or possibly volunteers would manage this composter and then redistribute the file, the finished compost.
What our, what our proposed compost center would entail? A compost turner, a large compost bin, an area to place completed compost, a system for people to get the completed compost.
Redistributing the final compost. Once this finished compost, it can be packaged up and sold back to the Dexter citizens or it can be free and open to the citizens. And then people will be able to use this fresh compost for their gardens and yards.
Logistics. Location of the composting center. We don't know exactly where this center could be, but if there was space near the recycling center, we thought that could be a possibility. Otherwise, we would need to find land to put something like this. The cost of the composting center. Finding the cost of such a facility was difficult to find and we had inconclusive results. However, the lasting impact and benefits of this facility are worth an investment. And other cities like Ann Arbor, and there's a lot of other big cities, Petoskey has also done composting programs like this.
Benefits of composting. Our generation must protect the environment and do everything in our power to improve it. One of the things we can do is composting. Composting is not only has environmental benefits, but can be used for our own benefit as well. Composting prevents soil erosion, reduces waste, promotes healthier plant growth, conserves water, combats climate change, change by reducing greenhouse gas, gas emissions, landfills, and it promotes the uptake of carbon dioxide by vegetation, and then it also promotes soil health.
City council's role. So we'd like to propose this idea of a community compost to the council to consider and then bring this idea to the community for their ideas and opinions with a final goal of a community compost program being started in Dexter.
Thank you for your presentation. I think it's a great idea.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, any thoughts you want to share in the back or? Want to talk about it? Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Adam?
Um, so I'm a personal composter, so I love the idea. I think it is super important that these three young ladies are a part of like the logistics of the composting center and help us bring their vision to life if we decide to pursue this. But I think it's a really great idea and I'm really happy they brought it to our attention.
Well said. Thank you again for your presentation this evening. Next up on our agenda is Jennifer Homestead from Ann Arbor Spark. Welcome.
You guys have a packet, but we have extra copies of our annual report that I wanted to give to you. Um, Michelle just came and she asked every year to come and say, I personally want to thank you for your support of regional economic development in Ann Arbor Spark. You provide Spark with $2,000 a year. And if you look on the back of our report, you can see all of our funders. So we are a public-private partnership, the regional economic development. We get funding from the private sector, from our universities and from our municipalities, county government and the state of Michigan. So we like to be an extension of your staff. We are on call, Michelle will call me. For example, she had a building owner who was looking to sell their building and wanted some comps before they made a relationship with a broker. We do that. We focus a lot on what we call our driving industries. So we don't focus on sort of retail or downtown businesses, but companies that export outside of the region. So you think of anything industrial or high tax, so work a lot with your companies in your industrial park. And I guess I need to really focus on regional economic development. So every year, you know, we don't necessarily have a big success story in Dexter, but we are agnostic to the community is looking to help companies come to Washington County. So for example, a big project that was a success two years ago was Walker building a new R and D facility in Pittsfield. A lot of people who work at Walker, the Dexter, they have a partnership with the Dexter City Schools on a exchange program, just sort of an example. And then we work with area companies to help them find talent and extra resources. And then I know when I presented last time, obviously during the pandemic, we because of funding that we get from people other than the state, we're allowed to pivot. And so we work to provide grants to small businesses that typically don't work in retail. But really just here to say thank you. I know you have a large agenda, but I'm here to answer any questions. And it's one of those things where Zach or anybody, I know we're making a presentation in a couple of weeks to Chelsea and your outline communities on a, we are creating a more robust regional database of available properties. So thank you, thank you, Michelle. Thank you, everybody. If you have any questions you have.
I don't have any. Appreciate your good work.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thanks, Jennifer.
And a copy of the presentation is in your supplemental packet.
Sure.
Yeah. What's really nice is to hear about Michelle and you working together and calling one another. For a long time, we were part of Spark. We didn't ever, maybe on our end, maybe on their end, on who met, what does it matter? But we didn't communicate as well. And this is really, you know, this is good.
For example, we have a public sector committee right now. I mean, you can add another representative, Michelle, representative from Dexter, and we're taking a tour of Toyota. This is our municipal partners and private sector partners, which are a lot of people from the Williston community, banking, construction, and think of people who benefit from when companies move into the area. So we're doing a tour of Toyota and just sort of an exchange of ideas.
Thank you. Thank you, then. Sorry to make you stand up twice. Uh, our last prearranged participation item is an update on our Dexter Chelsea Trail Connector efforts. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. I'm Peter Sanderson with Washington. That's Scott Brynt Townsend and Jeff Hardcastle is here also with the Huron Waterway Pathways Initiative, our nonprofit partner on a lot of the regional border to border trail development. So the last time we spoke to this body was actually, I believe, the week before the shutdown happened in 2020. And at that time, we were talking to you about connecting into the city of Dexter at Mill Creek Park with the border to border trail trying to connect Chelsea and Dexter together. Since then, we've been working on building several sections of that trail. There's now four miles complete, although not contiguous, of the seven mile total connection. And we've also been working with Justin and Smith Group to do some more detailed analysis of the floodplain in Mill Creek, which we reanalyzed since the panel was removed. And wanted to make sure that we're meeting all the appropriate environmental regulations associated with work in that area. So what we've been doing since then is building towards Parker Road. And you can see in the map here, which this is included in your packet, but here's Parker Road. And we're looking to connect into the Miller Smith Preserve along the road right of way at that location. We hope to do that next year in 2023. And so what we're trying to do right now is bring you all up to speed where we are in the process and hopefully get your buy-in prior to moving forward with any sort of detailed engineering and permitting of this. So the piece that we are talking about is a multi-durishtional project. It is in mine township, silo township, the road commission right of way, and in the city of Dexter. So we're here mainly to talk about the piece in the city of Dexter, but it's important to have it in context. So right now, the trail is proposed to stay on the north side of Dexter Chelsea Road to a point which we have identified where it would be safe to cross the road. We're speaking with or in process of speaking with a lot of these private landowners here on the south side of Dexter Chelsea Road in pursuit of some sort of easement to access the backside of Mill Creek Park. And so this map here shows kind of all the different alternatives that we are considering. The key things here to note are that dash lines are boardwalk, which is in order of magnitude more expensive and has environmental impact as compared to the solid lines, which are paved trail. Our goal is to connect in. This was based in the work that was done previously where we, when we came to this body last time in 2020, looking at various points to cross the creek. We analyzed about four different locations and we've identified the area near the, is it an octagon or hexagon?
Octagon.
Where the Mill Creek Park Phase One and Two join each other. That's near an area where it's currently being used as a trailhead. That made sense based on our conversation with Justin and our engineering crew, engineering team to connect in at that location. So there's several options here for how to cross the river or the creek. And that's what we have here. This was also a request from the council last time. We are showing two options. So one option is to repurpose the Bell Road Bridge, which if you're not familiar with that, it's the third oldest bridge in the state. It is no longer in use and will not be repurposed for road purposes. The road commission has indicated that to us. And they have, we've had it disassembled and analyzed for rehabilitation. And so here's one option, what that might look like looking from the downtown area at it. And then the other option here is looking towards downtown and Main Street from an aerial view. One thing you'll notice is that there's some boardwalk required on each end. And that is because the floodplain is still too wide. And so we are required to span that whole floodplain by people. So if you look at the other option, which is to use a traditional contact style prefabricated bridge, we still have to have boardwalk on each side. We can't make that bridge long enough without switching bridge types, which gets cost prohibitive. So here's that same view. This one showing what that might look like from the same aerial image. And these are just artist's renderings. The elevation has not been determined or anything like that. It's just a computer model, but it should give a pretty good idea of how to do that. One thing that we've also done is we've compared the numbers for constructing the whole segment, which includes the bridge, it's all the way up to Parker Road. And it's about $600,000 less expensive to repurpose the Bell Road Bridge as opposed to fabricating a new bridge structure. So those numbers are roughly 1.9 million or 2.5 million dollars for the whole project.
That's page 1101 and 102 of your packet.
And so at this time, the things that we're hoping to get your feedback on are, should we continue to pursue the reuse of Bell Road Bridge? Is that preferred by the city or should we pursue a contact structure, a new prefabricated structure? And also, how do you feel about this general location of the bridge crossing with the details still to be determined through engineering and permitting? And then our, our general overall alignment with connecting into the city at this location close to are pretty similar to each other with the details to be sorted out with the private property owners. As you can see, it's a complicated project because there's a lot of living pieces, so.
We actually have an actual item M3 down lower. Do we want to consider moving that up?
Yeah.
More. I haven't proved the agenda yet, but. Well, we'll have right after we move the agenda, but I think I just don't have to. Peter, I frankly prefer the Bell Road. I think it's really cool. I think it's a good reuse. I don't see any reason to have the other, the other one to be more like what cross spanning the Huron River right now. On the other sentence, yeah, I don't. I'd like to be a little different and more unique here. Frankly.
Get pretty across Huron River right now, the two, actually three right now, extra Huron. We simulate the, the contact that's similar to what would be versus like said, develop the data seems quite unique. Let's take it apart. And Judge Dexter wasn't involved when it was put on Bell Road in 1880. Those are interesting. Have that come back?
You have a pretty unique cost estimate number for that to put it back together. And you priced that with a contractor?
Yeah, yeah. The company took it apart of steel, Charlotte. They do this all over the country, disassemble bridges and form back together. And actually, it's in pretty good shape. It's not in great shape for vehicles because obviously when we put, we didn't have large trucks, we didn't have large vehicles. But for putting it back together for pedestrian, I mean, it'll be some minor stuff, but most part it's in pretty decent shape. So that's what they took that into account. So you're not buying all those raw materials because obviously, you know, the new bridge, you're buying all the raw materials, all the steel. Obviously, price of steel these days is, you know, gone up substantially. So we have all the materials. We set up here some, some, which is one reason is, you know. I wasn't sure exactly. I think probably a couple of years ago, probably wasn't that big a difference with the price of steel. It's gone up quite a bit.
And if we do this location here, do we have enough room to get? I guess level grade coming off the bridge into that hub.
This way?
Yeah. And just thinking about bikes coming down and transitions and crossings and does that?
Yeah. So those are some of the details that we still have to sort out. We have a shock survey out there yet. We think that we can make it work based on the GIS contours and the flood elevation of the creek. One thing that we were talking about, which isn't shown here, is we might propose a small expansion of that area to kind of create more relaxing zones, since it will be a three-way connection and a connection to a trailhead.
I like that idea.
But it would be pretty minor adjustments to what's there, not a total revamping of it.
The other advantage is the boardwalks that are out there and the trails out there is elevated. Maybe, you know, the, we were tying back into that while we were already up, so we're going to be up. So I think, well, those are the detail workout. I agree. It's all going to be elevated and we're going to make it as flat as possible. Because, yeah, we don't have steep grade coming down and all these trails coming together. Yeah. So I'm going to try to make that as flat as possible coming down. It makes sense. Those are details, you know, as we get moving forward, you know, higher engineering.
Yeah, I just, that question was important to be relative to location.
Yeah, the other thing that we talked about too is we've talked about having discussions on the city and the county partnering on the long-term maintenance of the bridge. So we don't install a very expensive bridge and then in 30, 40, 50 years, when it needs rehabilitation, the city is on its own, so.
Yes, we've talked with our director, Quay Mon. We're certainly open to have discussions with you all about shared maintenance agreements.
I also do like the option to let it's along the road there as opposed to coming in. And we'll continue down to the intersection of Dexter and Chelsea.
Down here?
Yeah.
I think that is partially dependent on what's going on with the road commission and there's, I think, a roundabout proposal there. So I think it might make sense to connect up here with the sidewalk or something at some point with those details are still too.
Okay.
And based on that future configuration.
We have talked about Rose's mission. I think you got the grand 20.6. And it's going to, sidewalks have been extended and then across the north side is what preliminary drawings that's all. Now, go on the, I'll go with the edit, bring it all the way back, you know, with you guys. Just makes it overall connection. But that's our goal, is tying all this stuff together.
Any questions for them? Jeff, anything, Dan? You're working hard on fundraising and all that. Thank you for that.
We're going to be more attractive, I think, on the private fundraising side, so. Did the other, the other topic of conversation is timing. So you guys are thinking we might be ready for construction in the spring of 2024?
At some point in 2024, yeah. That, that's why we're, we're here now is to hopefully get that big picture direction because we'd like to advance the engineering and permitting, which takes a fair amount of time. And during that time, that's when we can talk about maintenance agreements and we obviously have some easements and things like that to secure. So assuming that that all goes well, we'd like to have the connection complete or at least start it in 2024. We're not planning on using any state or federal money for this, so that kind of simplifies the timeline.
We'd like to have the road being cut in as part of our bicentennial.
Is it? When is that?
2020.
2024.
Or maybe it's the groundbreaking.
I'll take that chair.
It gives us a goal.
Let's see. No further questions? Thank you. I think we'll add them up so you can hear our action taken on that one.
Thanks. Thank you for all your good work. Thank you.
Okay, that is our last prearranged participation items evening. So page two of the agenda is approval of our agenda. If someone would like to move the agenda, maybe you can move it by and move the, move it up.
Yeah, I will be approving the agenda with moving item. Item number three, sit under.
Yeah, M3.
This is going to be moving it up to this point in the meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So we have approval, most to approve the agenda, moving item M3 up along approval agenda.
I'd like to just consider moving M7 to M1. Since that is actually what we're, what I think we need to have the focus of this meeting be. And I would hate to see that wait till the end, especially with some of these other items not being nearly as important.
And that actually suggests better than the supplement because we, we should have David Gaff in our line help us with that item.
Looks like he is there. Okay, sounds good to me. Yeah, Donna, Zach, you guys will all get that, moving M7 to M1?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. Ms. Pam, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Yes. Oram, yes. Griffin, yes. Fisher, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we are now on item M3. Requested action is whether or not the group should continue to pursue the reuse of the Bell Road Bridge. Make sure that the project group should pursue those crossing locations.
Yeah. Is there a suggestion motion or?
You will be on your own, but sure, it's great.
But Pam will help me. I move you.
At the location near Forest Lawn Center.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, council discussion?
What? I didn't say anything before, but I think the Bell Road Bridge is really interesting and historically and visually. And I like what it would bring to the border to border trails, you know, a piece of unique history that we don't see in the other areas. I, you know, it's also nice that it's proposed to be a lower cost, but I'm. I am, you know, it's also nice that it's proposed to be a lower cost, but on top of that, I think reusing material was always a great option. So. I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think your idea of timing into our celebration is perfect, particularly given that Judge Dexter was involved. I also have to flashback to Mr. Har castle. I remember we came in one night and and we were meeting up on the other side of the hill and we came in with an idea. And I think how exciting it must be for you now to be here instead of back there with an idea. So thank you for all the.
Any further comments? Jimmy?
Yeah, I'll just say I agree with, I think, all the other sentiments that were mentioned. I think the Bell Road Bridge is just more visually appealing, even if you look at the rendering, it just have structured view less than what the other one would do. So I think it's a bonus that it's even the less expensive option. Uh, and I I think the the trailhead meeting makes sense. Your concerns about the the grave and the slope makes sense. I did also want to mention, I personally been on the trail as soon as it starts. I think it's wily that bit there. Uh, it's beautiful the way, I mean, some of the way kind of leaves even behind some of those properties. I don't know how you manage to convince those people to do that, but. Uh, it is really nice. I appreciate your work.
Um, the the group also put together renderings of the bridge from the Main Street Bridge. And we didn't end up including them because you couldn't see it.
Zach just pointed out that it could also provide an overflow space for local pictures. When when the north and north creek gets filled up. Was there much on that? Okay, Ms. Pam, please call the vote to approve on motion by. Is your second by one?
Auburn, yes. Fisher, yes, Aurora, yes, Griffin, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Appreciate all your good work. We're down to item F, which is Declaration of Any Capes of Interest. Zach?
My employer is getting paid as part of the bills and pay.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you. We have no public hearings this evening, so we are down to not arranged participation. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight on an arrange? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
His name is Joe Somper, three two three point four, go ahead, court. Just starting out tonight, I was really impressed because the presentation from the Girl Scouts presentation about the. Border border trail. I mean, I was literally walking in, talking to Dan. And talking about the things that made Dexter great. And it just never ceases to amaze me that. Something like ten years ago, somebody said, what are we gonna do after we get this done? What else is there to do? And if there's always more stuff that's coming along, so we agree with that. Um. And that's why it's so sad. That I'm here to speak tonight about agenda item two regarding the eligibility of council member Fisher for counsel. Um, I was very surprised when I first saw the item on the agenda. Um, and first heard about the issue. I would I would say I was shocked. I was I was surprised because. Of what I would say is that it's just absurd. It's one of those things that you hear the question and you say to yourself. That doesn't make any sense. It's just. It's just unbelievable that the accusation was even being made. Worse, the the lead source is is an unnamed person who. Apparently, the last eighteen months has been sitting next to their front window and looking out. A tracking track of the comings and goings of Councilmember Fisher. Again, it's just absurd. I literally could not tell you. Any one of my neighbors was in or out of their house for an extended part of the time, for part period of time. I literally talked to one of my neighbors last week. I was talking to her and she said, yeah, I just had my hip replaced. She's been in the hospital for two weeks and no idea. The idea that somebody can sit across the street and that's a reliable source. It calls into question the person that claims that a reliable source. It's obvious that Councilmember Fisher is a resident of the city by many criteria. One of the questions that was brought up was about the personal residence exemption. And for the state law, for the state guidelines. I can tell you as a member of the board of the review that when we did have questions about PRD. And we did review these things and we did have people come to us and ask us about those in no uncertain terms. Councilmember Fisher would qualify for PRD. And if that's part of the criteria as a resident, she would qualify as a resident. It 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 literally is not even a question. So the real question becomes, why is it that these questions are being asked? One question was, or one statement was that it was from evidence from a reliable source. I I find that hard to believe just because I just don't believe that somebody could possibly keep that much track. Some of. Uh, so he's coming to the. Part of the state law that was quoted said the greater part of time. That somebody spends at their home, but the other part of that sentence is if there are two residences. Which Councilmember Fisher doesn't have, so it doesn't apply. She only has one. There is also a question posed to Mayor Keel. It sounds like you're not really curious if Councilmember Fisher has vacated her seat due to lack of residency. So maybe the issue isn't really the residency of Ms. Fisher, but rather whether or not Mayor Keel will. Allow a question to be discussed and give weight and credence to it by bringing it to a council. We have never, that I remember, ever had a problem on council with people bringing forth or false allegations. That's a very serious thing. The people in council are afforded the ability to request any item be placed on the agenda. It literally is carte blanche, right? It's in the council rules. Somebody wants, if you're in council, if you want an agenda item, you put it in by the Monday before or the Monday or Wednesday beforehand. And it's on the agenda. So you have the ability to put anything that you would like coming there. That with great power comes great responsibility and part of that responsibility is to not put out false allegations. Because false allegations stick to people. They had, they put questions in people's minds and that's why we don't have, that's why prosecutors don't go forward with charges until they get evidence that shows what it is. Thank you very much, Mr. Michelle, for the reminder in time. I hope you all consider this in your discussions tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight on an arrange? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Raytown, three five three nine Hudson Street, City of Dexter.
Good to see you, Ray.
You too, yeah. I'll not address the often the room right now. That's uh, goes without saying. I'm sure everyone has your opinion. What's allowed in the charters is allowed in the charter. The question, the problem I have is. The unnamed source, I guess, or the reliable source. This is a. Um, I'm watching Fox News. Reliable source. Um, when I was on council, people would come to me and say, I heard this and I heard that. Until you're ready to tell me what you heard and who you were, it was all just hearsay. Because you didn't have the backbone to stand up and say this. I didn't take. I didn't take somebody's word for it. I wanted them to actually state it. And I never had a problem with that. I'm sure it didn't work the way I want it all the time, but that's just the way it was. Now, I've known now since I moved in the town about mid eighties. I know local. I got no road name after me. I didn't go to school here. I'll never be a local because I didn't go to school here. But I know Paul cousin and I don't know Fisher about the same amount of time coming out forty years. So I don't know Paul's feeling about this. I ain't talked to him. I don't know what he can talk. I don't know how incubated he is. But I I think he possibly feel a little. Disappointed in the way this is going. I mean, it's. Everyone, everything's been done right. The council members have their requests. And they can do as they request because that's in the charter. I did. Just find it strange. It was exacted so swiftly. I thought perhaps there could have been. Some prior discussion, um, but that's just me. So, Don, I do want to thank you for your service and for your friendship. Uh, we've been through a lot together, you know, we've been on Z D A, election committee, planning, what else? Cars. We had a fireboard with the ever.
No.
Okay. So, you know, we've been around a block a couple of times. You guys played it straight. I don't, I find it very hard. And if you, if the if the law's the law, that's the law. But I find it very hard to believe that you would do anything that disingenuous on purpose. Now. There's been a, I won't say an accusation. I'll say there's been a question raised. And I would like to see the answer to that question if possible with three remaining meetings. But you done, I'd already been out of here. I'd have flipped him off and left. Of course, I'm just a hot head, you know? I got no, I got no, man, cool. But be that as it may, thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your time. Remember back when Paul Bishop and Lauren Yang got in that big old fight? We locked a manager out of the office. I had to be, what, eighty six? Then Lauren took over as president. We got a big hookup with John Rush. I don't know, Mr. Laraway with the third street. So I'm sure you've seen worse than this and I'm sure you will survive. Good luck to you, honey.
Thank you for your comments, right? Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Okay, let me just check online. Is there anyone online that would like to speak under not arrange participation? If so, please use the raise hand feature. Josh, if you can help me. Make sure I don't miss anything. Not seeing any. Okay, item I on our agenda is our upcoming meeting calendar. Are there any corrections in any windows to the calendar or any comments about upcoming meetings?
What's that? The Capitol is going to meet at the Chelsea or at the the lower level of the Chelsea City Hall.
Okay, that is on October fifth.
Yep, with both from Spark there.
That that's not that address as well, so it's not twelve. Okay. Thank you. The other.
Sorry, is that gonna be I I'm going thing?
No, we're a bit nomadic right now.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to reports. Comments on the calendar. First is our Public Services Superintendent. Welcome, Tim.
Good night, good evening. How was every day?
Good.
So obviously, input workers to the court. If there's any questions, I can answer.
I just wanted to follow up on the sign placement relative to the sidewalk. I don't know if you were able to get me.
I haven't got any, but I did talk over Kurt and him and I basically discussed it and we were talking about the same thing. It's all basically is to bring that back. It would be almost impossible. Both sides, you would have too much of the parking in the road. It almost defeats the, and I get what you're saying and it makes a lot of sense, but that's what when I gathered from Ben when I was talking with him, so.
So do we know if there's actual, there are standards?
There is a standard and I'd have to look it up because I know that it was, there is, it's a book of. No name, but I know exactly. Thank you. Yeah, so and I could look that up in there. The problem, like I said, is that if you were to move that back and I understand you're saying you want to build it, so. You move that back, then you got people, once they stop, then they're gonna roll forward and. To see you pass those cars would be very hard, but. So that was the biggest concern and that's why I want to talk to her about that. So. So, but I will look in the book just to double check and see.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, I mean. I see how it has to be, uh, both things are consideration. I just, I I don't know. I haven't been able to find myself if there's a code that says. Always and in every situation, the south side needs to be in advance of the sidewalk. If there's some leeway given, you know, proximity to the actual intersection, that sort of a thing, I guess it would be used.
And maybe maybe Patrick can can give us some some advice after the meeting.
I do know it has very specific language about how far from the edge of the road.
Yes, I don't know about sidewalk. They go check for the sidewalk. That's gonna be the thing. So I heard, I'm pretty sure Kurt's got that pull up sidewalk check with them. Again, like I said, it was before him and I discussed it and that's what we came up with. From standing there.
Tim, another sidewalk related question, sir. Um, do we have at Kensington and next Gran Arbor Road a sidewalk closed or a barricade?
So there is a sidewalk, I don't want to say closed. But there's a barricade up there and I think it's to deter people because it's one on cure to cure down the road. They have it going down there. I think it's like in the morning, so it's.
I see. Okay, so to not cross the front of construction. I couldn't read the small sign during, but I didn't watch it.
Yeah, because they're they're in and out of there.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Part of the sidewalk is gone over there too. So I'm back to talking. Not this week and the following weekend, shutting down water mains move fiber.
Questions for Tim? When the leash, when's the leash machine coming out?
It's out. I don't know when it's coming out. It is it is ready to go.
I I think it's the second week of October. Um, so what we actually, we have the uh. The draft schedule in the news.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Um, but I I wanted to confirm with Kurt and he said that the draft schedule that I sent over to him looked good, so.
So, um. The grassy, I received has been put down on that gun, second street again, we're open. Crossing our fingers. It's looking a lot better than what it was. I'll tell you that much. So. You know, moving forward with that. I'm gonna say this, but I said this to you guys last time too. Babys are supposed to, they're they're on site. They're supposed to start tomorrow. The concrete is supposed to start next Monday for the crosswalks. And hopefully the substantial completion within a week or so from there.
For the third run.
Great.
So.
It's the curb work looks great.
Yeah, it does look good. It's just we've had some issues.
But if they they don't get in here pretty quick, then uh. The kind of thing is we'll start October then.
Next Wednesday and that's. They'll be in my face. Because I mean, even if they got the concrete in when this Wednesday, we'd just be real close, but. Have it next Monday, Tuesday. I'll probably have a good five to seven days of liquid damages. All right.
Wow.
I have seen on, you know, Facebook, on a post, let me just clarify where I've seen this. On a post from the Dexterville, somebody commented and said, I've never seen a side or a street take this long to be paved. If someone asks me what where the delay is, where is the delay? Who does that stick with? Because it's not us, right?
It's this is the contractor one hundred percent. Um, they asked for a little delay because they ran into some issues. Um, but this has all been documented through each and everything. We have everything written down. And this is completely one hundred percent on them and it's coming from curbing to sidewalks to other issues.
And who hired that contractor?
So, so I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna give some background. So, um, uh, it was an M dot Latin project. And so basically, when it when it goes to run that, we don't really have a say in who gets it and that automatically goes with the with the lowest bidder. And they pull or that they basically grant the ability to bid to a certain pool of bidders. Um, so not just anyone is eligible to to bid. And so, you know, this went through the through their process that they selected All Star as the low bidder. Um, and I think one of the issues that to them, this is a small project. And so they they felt like they can get away with not prioritizing us. Um, and they actually told us that. Um, and they actually told us that one of their other projects has significantly higher liquidated damages. Which is why they're, they're okay with potentially taking liquidated damages from us. So.
All right, thanks for.
And I've been talking with W H O about, and I talked to Justin about this. They, they get reviews at the end. And in their reviews, you know, we're allowed to give our opinions and speak on it, but I'm definitely part of that process. This is just not right.
Okay, so thanks, Tim. Next up is our community development manager. Good evening, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine. How's council this evening?
Good.
A little low in the voice today. Sorry about that. The voice is acting up again. Okay, so you've got my two week report and before I start to give you some updates, do you have any questions, Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for that, the ordinance enforcement.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Um, and I actually do have an update on eighty-two fifty here on. Today was the day for the mitigations to be violated or at least action indicating that the applicant is moving toward mitigating. And there is, there has been some cleanup attempted. One of the vehicles has been moved. We are still far cry from the case being closed, but it does allow the work that the property owner and the occupant of the business. It allows the work that they've done to give an extension of at least two more weeks. And hopefully they'll continue to make progress and we can get this thing cleared up. We are working toward, I do need some feedback from you. The lawn and weed maintenance. So, um, as I've explained in my report, the International Property Maintenance Code does regulate all existing residential numbers of infrastructure as well as premises. Excuse me. And that will include grass and weeds. The it cites back to the general code. But considering that we're going to be going through this comparison of the International Property Maintenance Code with a general code. Are you, do you want to do a two-step amendment process that may, when we get to the second step, which is the rental inspection and property maintenance code stuff, ends up amending the first, which is what we've been working for, which is the lawn maintenance portion. Staff has no problem doing the two. I just would like your feedback as to, are you okay with the one and done, which would put this all down the road just a little, or do you want it done in the two-step with the lawn coming earlier? Even if it does have to be amended later.
The latter is my preference.
I think if you have an initial contact, you might get further. You can go on or be our situation person, you're able to talk with them. You may get more cooperation. I just wanted to, I think some people don't understand me. They should, but I don't think they do. Where would snow fit in there?
So our snow ordinance is, is pretty good. It's not the same, um, it's not the same requirement as the, as the lawn cutting. You basically have, downtown businesses have a shorter timeframe in which they have to turn over, making sure things are geared. They get a little extra help from DPW because DPW does. So residents basically have forty-eight hours.
I'm sorry, I guess I was thinking more about enforcement.
In what way?
I just feel like that's also an issue. Sorry, this is probably derailing my conversation right now.
That's okay. So after a snow, um, residents have forty-eight hours to clear.
It's from the cessation of. I mean, I'm well aware.
And so what, what we have, what we try to do is to go out after that snowfall. Check to make sure everything is clear, those that are. There's usually a list of this, uh, properties and they get letters, um, letting them know you gotta clear this off. You don't within the next number of hours, um, you're gonna get a ticket. I think the first ticket is fifteen dollars. Um, if there's a subsequent notice after that, it increases. I can't wrap it up in my head exactly what it consists. Nine times out of ten, people get it cleaned up. What causes difficulty is when you have cessation and then another snow within, you know, forty-four hours or whatever. Or if somebody's cleared the snow, um, but then you get melt. It ices the sidewalk. They think they've done it, but it needs to be done. So, uh, one of our business owners who's actually renovating the property on Baker Road right now, she ran into that last year. She had a service that would clear the snow. Sun came out, melted the snow and then it would ice. I did a complaint and I have to, I have to let her know. So she was constantly in that cycle. There are others, like, uh, seven zero zero one Dexter Harbor, Noble Alliance, where they weren't getting it done at all. That they've already been notified what their responsibility is and let's not have this happen again. Does that answer your question?
I shouldn't even brought up a question. It's okay.
To answer your question, I'd need to know what the gap would be between the different approaches. Of doing one and then coming back and finishing off or waiting to do the whole thing.
So, um, because the International Property Maintenance Code does have lawn and weed regulations. We are at the point yet where I can develop a rental inspection ordinance. Based on those elements within the property maintenance code that we want to incorporate into the general code. Because one, I haven't gotten through the whole International Property Maintenance Code. And two, I haven't been able to finish yet the comparison with our general code and where the, where there may be some overlaps. Not necessarily identical language, but similar regulations that there needs to be tweaking. That process is going to take longer. That could be a three to six month process. Lawn, I could do within the next, um, uh, two meetings for you. Excuse me. Based on the direction that council is given. But we may have to then amend it again, once we get all through the property maintenance code, get a rental inspection going and know where the overlap has been in the general. And I just wondered if you wanted to, if you wanted to end up doing something that may end up having to be redone again or not.
So I, I will say I do hate having to redo. I've, I've had it stopped and started and it ended up doubling the amount of time if they just let us go three months and do it. If the question is, do we do lawn just now or do we wait until I see MC? I'd be comfortable with waiting because we're at the end of lawn season, hopefully. If the question is, do we wait on the rental inspection, I would prefer not. I would prefer to get that in because that's an ongoing issue currently.
Okay, um, I know that we had the, the house on Central Street. I'm not aware of other rental properties that are causing problems. So if you are aware, please let me know. Just so that I, I can keep that on our radar. And understanding what those issues are will also be helpful as we are going forward with the rental inspection ordinance. And just to reiterate, the building department in my conversations with them, they are willing to do the rental inspection. Once we get an ordinance, they would be, they're willing to be enforcement agency. We have a good working relationship with them from a cost benefit standpoint. Utilizing the county, um, without having the existing infrastructure already with the building department and then just needing to hire someone would save the city a whole lot of time and money. So, um, I'm not asking for that now, but please keep that in mind as we move forward. That decision will need to be made. I think that's it. It is, so I've heard from, from Zach, from Sean. Is there consensus on the board to move forward with a one, one-time amendment? That's very kind of the answer. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Michelle. Moving down the agenda, so we have our sheriff's report, sheriff's report up next. Good to see the level enforcement up again from last year to this year.
I know that I met with Kurt and Tim a little bit earlier today. Even Kurt commented that he, he feels like he has seen them out more than in, in a recent past.
Yeah, they're all over the ground below. Keep this moving then. We're down to the city manager report.
Sure, just a couple of items. Number one, uh, Tim Kurt and I met with a concrete soft butter. And we're actually gonna be moving forward with a pilot project on Baker near Queens and Things. To try and even out the sidewalk and see how it looks. We were fairly impressed with the areas that had been done at the schools. It seems like they, they do a good job. And so this is a, a test to make sure that, you know, it's, it's gonna look good in, in our areas.
This is concrete grinding?
Concrete grinding, okay, concrete cutting, similar. And so we're, we're looking to do that here in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. I included in my report that I reached out to library and reserve October eleventh. For a possible date for a fire station public information session. We can get into that more, bring the item, but keep that in mind that I, coming out of the media, I like to make sure that, that's something that council is interested in. And if we don't want to keep that date, then I can let the library know that we can give it back or open that up if, if we don't want to use that. We.
I appreciate that you reserved it. Uh, I have to be in St. Joseph that evening. For meeting. So if council chooses to do it that night, I will not be able to be there after work. At St. Joseph that night. And I apologize because I was pushing for that week sometime, so.
Yeah, and, and that was the only time that the, the library got available. Uh, I could, I could reach out to, to St. Andrews and see if this room might be open one, one of those nights. And I believe it, it would be. It's just a matter of letting them know when, when we need to use. Would, would, would that prefer that?
I'd love to be there.
I'd like to see if I can.
Um, I can, I can send out an email and, or a doodle one, or written, let you know what night is that, that week worked.
Thanks, Justin.
Yeah.
I do think it's important that we get the weeks that we don't have on the public because.
And we, we were also trying, trying to coordinate that with the newsletter, that, in the newsletter, until people know what that date looks like. So, um, I'll try to get something out tomorrow and everybody can return our response pretty quick. Makes sense. We've been working hard on, on getting absentee ballots out. We got the absentee ballots in, in the office middle of last week. And so we've been plugging away at getting them processed and stuffed and ready to go in the mail. So, um, we got the, the first batch out in mail today and we checked the other side batch will go, go in mail tomorrow. So, um, we're at about twelve hundred for, for November. It's, it's about a third. One, one other item I wanted to coordinate with the newsletter was to get your feedback on Halloween. In previous year, last year at least, we did five to seven PM. And I wanted to know if that still sounds good or if council wanted to change that at all. Normally council would, would adopt it as, as, as an item, but since the newsletter is getting ready to go out, if we can include that, that would be, that would be nice.
So if my observations are five is really tight for folks who work to get in, five thirty is still tight, but I, if given the choice, I'd prefer five thirty to some. So for five thirty to eight, so kids get another half hour chocolate, but I'm gonna keep the two hours.
So it comes to Denver?
I brought that point up last, last time we did this. And the point that was made and I didn't agree with is it's more daylight for the kids. It's less dark and they're safer. So I would rather stick with what you proposed.
Yeah, and then I, I don't, I don't have necessarily a preference for.
Couldn't be five to seven thirty?
It's okay with me.
Hold me home.
You're not following me.
Go for it. Apparently little kids can get them out there early and get them back.
There you go.
And also it needs to get a little bit dark for my fog machine.
And I don't expect to see big kids until late.
Yeah, it, it, it is always nice when it, when it's dark. So that way, when I get my chainsaw.
Yeah. I know most of my friends will probably start at five and go till like ten. Okay. Yeah.
And I believe that is it. Does anybody have any question?
This is just a, a question off the back page of the newsletter. It's really kind of a nitpicky thing. Is there a reason why on the top, we're listed in a different order, both council and staff is listed in a different order than it is on the bottom? I noticed that last time. It just seems like consistency would be.
Uh, I can take a look at that. There was not a specific reason.
And here there was. It was just something I finally, I mean, I probably looked at it, you know, a bunch of times. It just.
And it's probably just one of those things that, you know, we looked at it over and over and over and just become blind to it.
Not like it's a big deal, but.
The newsletter looks good, though.
I'd give credit to Josh.
Let's work on that. Other questions for Justin? Okay, I will move down to my report. And we'll read everything there to you. I wanted to highlight the meeting that I had on September fourteenth. With Jim Morrison, representing the senior senator and the three supervisors from Saddle Webster and Dexter County. Five of us met to talk about next steps to help the senior center and seniors find revenue sources, which they could use for not only funding, but potentially a new home somewhere. And the idea we're exploring is helping them set up their own authority. Not to be confused with the prior effort, but set up their own authority and. Not to be confused with the prior effort, but set up their own authority and. I contacted the Garfield Township, Traverse City area that has a similar one and was able to get a sample set of. Articles of incorporation to review with them, so the next step on that is going to be to set up another meeting with those five people. All five of us, I should say, and talk through that articles of incorporation idea, tweak it a little bit and then bring the draft to each of the boards for your input and comment, so. I'll keep you posted on that, but I think. You know, essentially the seniors have one more year in current location draft. While I don't expect them to get kicked out, this is a problem that needs our attention and needs some help in, I think, giving them the opportunity to seek the funding they need. If there was a way to set up that authority for them to govern, they could then ask the voters for the funding that may be separate from any other issue that might be on the side of that. I think that would be all understood. Anyway, more to follow, but I want to make sure you're keeping a loop on that topic, and if you have any questions, happy to talk one about it.
I might just like to make a comment, I'm on that board and we happened to meet for a long afternoon. After you had your meeting and the excitement is wonderful for the board members, they were kind of feeling like, well, what do we do now? All we do is volunteer. It worked out really well and then I don't know if Jim got a chance to call you, he said he was going to, but he's gotten lined up with a man who's done this before. He wants to help Dexter, so that was really good news that we have an expert that's willing to come. I just want to share that.
Well, my role so far has just been to try and facilitate conversation with everybody and it seems like at least two out of three townships. I think the city would be interested in at least reviewing the articles of incorporation and seeing what the idea and territory might be, so. Again, more to follow on that. Wanted to point out that the D D A did approve the predevelopment agreement that's on our agenda here later this evening. They're very excited to do that and hopeful that we will support them in that effort to try to be something of that property. Are there any questions for me? Okay. We have one council member report in the back. Do you want to say anything more about the new written?
Thank you, yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty self explanatory. I was contacted by a number of residents who are just in passing, heard some concerns about some of the recent activity in and around the city, including our neighborhood with the break-ins and. Incidents on the trail, so I reached out to Lieutenant Hunt, who I very appreciative that you took the time to chat with me and learned quite a bit. And I just thought it could be helpful to, you know, with this day coming up, if you see something, say something today, which I guess passed yesterday, but. You know, there are now days and months for many things, I think even October might be National Preparedness Month or something like that, but. This day fell around the same time as I was gathering this information and I reached out to Lieutenant Hunt and I said, well, what can we do? You know, given these concerns and came up with this list of things here, I wanted to share that with the public and I wanted to make sure that I got that in the back.
Great. And you don't have to wait till the next September twenty fifth if you see something.
Right.
Very good. Okay, this brings us to our consent agenda. So you have five items on the consent agenda.
I will refer to five items on consent agenda, those of your role in the amount of three hundred twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. The appointment of Julie Knight to the Parks and Rec. The catch base repair award to Bostic Company for a mountain after exceed five thousand one hundred. The purchase of a wastewater treatment digester heater to Madison Electric not to exceed nine thousand. And water distribution system materials inventory award to M and K. And televising for a mountain after exceed twenty-five thousand.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, thank you. It's a lot, good job. Ms. Pam, please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Fisher, yes, Rob Rob, yes, Hubbard, yes, Griffin, yes, Kio.
Yes. Motion carries five zero, with Zach abstaining. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we're down to new business where we have moved our discussion slash consideration of. Fire station design and bond information to the top. Justin, why don't you start or introduce Dave or get us onto this and we can decide what we need to do from there.
So between Friday and Saturday, I emailed out some additional information that was provided by David. We had our user group meeting that met three times, with the last being just a couple of weeks ago. Then David went back and did a bunch of work in a very short period of time and was able to get me material on Friday and Saturday, which. Was included in your supplement. But David Gass is with Partners in Architecture and I believe he is online, David, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes, we can. And so maybe, maybe David can just walk through what was provided.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We had a very robust three or four last weeks. With the mission of modifying the scope for both sites with the target budget under nine point four million. For total project turnkey, all included. And we had a pretty good start with a couple of discussion items in our last meetings. And I'm looking at the Mav site is how I'm going to start and I think that's the way it was in your packet as well. Some of the things you may remember we talked about was maybe deferring the training facility component out of the project and reducing square footage. So we did that, we talked about some potential options on how we provide the bay, whether it's double loaded. Less than five bays that we had previously and you'll see in the plan, we did, we looked at a couple of different really creative ideas. And added a bay, actually, six bays. Which increases functional operation in terms of response and the way things will flow, really. We also looked at. A couple of things that we could improve from a cost efficiency way and that was. And we mentioned these too in terms of the way lockers are laid out where it's a locker restroom arrangement, which is pretty traditional. And the new idea be a locker gender neutral, so it's not a changing area, it's a place for personal items. With the, in clothing, et cetera, and then a changing shower restroom facility separate for individuals. And that in combination with the way we did the dorm rooms. Was less square footage as a whole, so that was a modification of efficiency. And in the process, we added two dorm rooms, which were future growth dorm rooms. And we did that also through looking at the dorm rooms only as a place to sleep, not as a study place. Where typically you'd have a desk in the dorm room for personal study and move that function to the office area or the wash radio room. More of a common study area, so we were able to increase the dorms, but decrease and make that more efficient in terms of square footage. The other thing we looked at. Was some of the. Operational thing in terms of paid on call, in terms of where they had parked, how they would enter the station, the P P E locker room was able to get reduced a little bit. And parking, or we at least indicated it as land bank parking, future potential parking. We have the space for it, but we don't provide it in this current plan. A couple of other things, you know, from a budgeting standpoint, in terms of reductions, looking at the site as a whole. Working with O H M, we learned a couple of things about the tension and what's available there. And some of the costs we previously showed were able to reduce there. I'm only going to go through some of the plans, I think you have those in front of you, hopefully you've had a chance to look at them. When you're looking at the site plan, it looks very much similar to what the layout was before, but you can see in the parking areas left and right. Indicating land bank parking and that was really from working with the fire chief staff. Wanting more parking near the personnel fireplace side and not needing so much on the paid on call side. The apron got a little wider because of the. Added bay, but we were able to accommodate all the foreseeable apparatus. Within those six bays, seven different pieces. So that was kind of the site plan element of it in the. Later, you can see some of the things I talked about and I'm looking at the floor plan now, so the bay stretched out. All the way to the left, the pink area, which is the firefighter support spaces, those will work out in a little more detail. With a great deal of help and input from the chief. Some of these spaces, we knew they were going to be there, we just didn't indicate them in previous plans, kind of showed some of the detail there. When you're looking at the living side, the blue areas, you can see where as I was describing, the locker room is one big room. And in the middle towards the upper side and then flows down through six dorms and then into three bathroom areas directly below that. We also increased from a function standpoint, office space, adding two offices. Increased a little bit, but not much in that area. On the same side, right side. On the top and bottom, you'll see two dash lines, one's indicating the deferred training space, which would be down on the lower side. And then potential sheriff, if you were going to add that, would be blocked in the top. It doesn't, they're not planned out in great detail, but when you look at how that would situate itself on the site plan. You see that in a master plan kind of way, it all works, works pretty well. The next couple sheets there are going to be imaging of character. Pretty much similar in terms of masonry prominently, predominantly masonry across the front. We did in this scheme show a raised roof or pitched roof, not the flat roof, which previously we were thinking because of budget. But because we added a six bay, the building got more linear and we felt from a design standpoint, place making along that street curb. That having something that raised up above the parapet or the flat line would, would make it a little more appealing and feel like it fit in scale. Introduce some siding in some areas, so in the gable on the right hand side, we introduced some siding, it kind of blends in nicely. Kind of harmonizes with the masonry a little bit, that was just a way to take some of the materials, keep them in, in context, all nicely working together. But reduce costs. The whole, that's, I think we were able to do that across the sides of the building. We're looking at the budget. Budget sheet. Project cost. Building area is around fourteen thousand eight hundred, a little more than that, including a mezzanine, the mezzanine would be on the support side. On the living side, that would be right above the support spaces. Access by stair. And then running down, you will notice that the site, site cost is less than what it previously showed. We did reduce some of the paving, but primarily due to the detention and. Working through all the different construction element costs that we ended in a project construction process estimate of. Seven million, six hundred and five thousand. Then the general condition soft costs of the project moves it up just over nine million, nine million forty-nine thousand. Part of our. Missions was to bring in, you know, a project that would be under comfortably under your nine point four, so I introduced a couple of things. That are options to consider in terms of maybe reducing the cost from that nine million forty-nine. First, I note there the storm shelter, I've always been planning that, we were going to do it because it would be required based on code. Still pending ratification right now and we've done some digging around to see if that item. Were an issue, it's not an issue, it more likely will be a requirement, but not, won't be a requirement more likely until spring of next year. So I think you have the option of doing it because it's probably a good idea, but you won't be in a situation more likely that it would be required. That will probably won't be an issue. And some of the reduction areas mentioned earlier, we added two offices, you could potentially eliminate those at this point and. Two dorm rooms, so I think there's some. Could be made to use the future dorm growth area, which is internal in an office sort of way for now, but you'd be able to reduce some office build out and save some costs. The other idea would be. Maybe reduce the bay depth or maybe just an apportion. Previously, we had it shown with apparatus that was custom sized and during the course of the last weeks. In discussion, the idea would be, let's plan it for a standard aerial size, so you wouldn't have to custom order that one large apparatus. And in doing that, we increased the depth of the bay all the way across there, some close to ninety feet across, so. That would be a sizable reduction if we wanted to reduce that and that would bring your overall cost down to eight point seven. Show obviously, next line item down. Yeah, we generally look at a reduction of about twenty percent, so the space is reduced from what we've previously been looking at about twenty percent. Maybe a little less than maybe between fifteen and twenty percent. So we show that at six hundred thousand, if you were going to do all of that together, be nine point six five roughly, but if you wanted to look at a minimum. Going in cost would be eight point six or just below eight point seven, eight six nine. And just again to say what the highlights of this were, that we increased some efficiency. And we added a six bay was the biggest, I think, change here, which I think was a very good functional spin from where we were before. Any questions on the Mav site?
So David, the original was closer to twenty thousand square feet, is that correct?
Originally, yeah, the last one we were looking at, I think was seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty-five.
Thank you.
One of the other things that we reduced the mezzanine in that, the current scheme also, so we have one mezzanine, not two. There were some compromises and I think the group that helped work through this, I got, had good feedback and then there were compromises, but there was also. I'd say functional operational improvements that we were able to in thought, including the project. By merely the sixth bay, I know that was a pretty good idea and by comparison, we were about a hundred and ten square feet more going to base versus. Three bays that would be front and back loaded. And so this, this also provided for us a seventh piece of equipment in there, the trailer and gator. Any other questions? I'll go to the. Pardon?
The good looking rendering, David.
Thank you, appreciate that. We have a really good team, it wasn't me, but I'll pass that along, I appreciate that. For the main street site, very similar in terms of our approach, reduced the scope with the target of left to nine point five. A lot of the same functional ambitions we had a map we applied here. Couple of things that we really fixed on was. Couple of things that we really fixed on was how do you have six apparatus that exit directly on the main street and not. Have to have a ninety degree conflicting maneuver. Couple of things we looked at. Were maybe exiting on the Alpine in the second story scheme. Ultimately, even before that got really flushed out, we were able to remaneuver. The new addition to show two bays of the same depth that we have at the map site fifty six feet. To go right on the main street. Now I'll back up here just a minute, the 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 big picture concept of this approach was. We have this thing that's there, that's been the common ingredient all along. And we want to use what's there, there's infrastructure that's beneficial to rebooting a new life cycle. And the thing that I thought or we thought that was most probable to be useful was. Really just the bays. Even though they're deficient in a lot of ways, the bay is more than the sheriff's piece and more than the current living administration piece. Is functional in in a way because it's functioning now, even though it's not optimal. So that's what we keep is the before center, the the four bays, which is the centerpiece. Remove the administration, remove the sheriff. Keep the lower level below all of it. And then build a new living dorm admin space hooked up against Alpine. Build the two new bays and all the support spaces where the sheriff is and going a little bit. Down towards the water or the creek. And in doing that, we were able to accomplish, I think, the square footage and the functionality needed. And yes, with some compromise in the current bays. And below. We would have the plus or minus five thousand square. For the existing that would be refurbished. Primarily one bay and everything towards Alpine from that would be firefighter support space. And from the second bay towards the creek would be the sheriff area. And the addition that's from the towards the creek. That's the two at bays and the support above would be unfinished. Prepared for use in the future raw space, sufficient for training, restrooms. And a little bit of a lobby, you'll see that in the in the next plan. The things we tried to. As we have in past schemes, try to do. Have a clear separation for safety and recognition of how you get there if you're Joe Public and. We created the entry for that off of Alpine. With the intention, you would never have to go into the main apron space for Joe Public. Dedicated parking, so we'd be creating parking on Alpine into the right of way to to achieve that. The same kind of things I mentioned of six dorms, added offices, the locker layout with separation that we applied at map we. We do here, we just split it on two floors, that's all the space to the right and. Probably the best way to look at that is the third sheet in. It's called ground and upper level floor plans. It's your third sheet. And that's the blue box basically is the ground level plan, that would be all the firefighting areas, dorms, locker. Dayroom space and then the area right above that. Office and the fitness space. And the fitness space would be accessible from the fighter area down below. There with an exit to the at bay and the events, there's there's a need to respond. And then when you're looking at the same plan, the pink area is off to the left near the creek by the new at base. It's a very similar, very, very similar arrangement to what we were able to achieve at map. The slight difference is the workroom is open and part of the bay, but all the other sequential spaces are. Entering for decon, cleaning your gear, drying your gear and. Arriving for paid on call, PPE equipping, equipping is the same as it was in the map. Same as with SCBA area. I'm going to go back one sheet and I'll be backwards one sheet and I'll be looking at the lower areas called park level floor plan. The pink and the blue are the existing square footages of the building and the green is that space I called. Raw unfinished space. That would be what you could potentially turn into training room, restroom for the park. Kind of what we had been looking at for other plans, but it would be purely a raw unfinished space right now from a budget perspective. That's that's why I did it that way. I'll I'll cover a couple of things when I'm going over the budget, but while we're looking at that plan, the blue area, which is the sheriff's is. Really two distinct areas, the bigger rectangle where the six little columns or squares are. That would be the floor area, that would be for the sheriff. And it's slightly bigger than their current space, it's not quite the fourteen fifty that. We would be providing at the map street in a preferred development. But the box or rectangle, more linear up and down space. Is a mezzanine, it's that odd little space that's there now, that's. Above that waterway, I'm not really sure what the technical word of it is, but. That's a, it's a mezzanine arrangement that could be utilized for. The fitness for firefighters. And we had looked at that in previous schemes as well, didn't go through a lot of detail here, but I do mention it. So the very last graphic is an image and. I think it's got some good beginnings to it and it could be rather interesting. Although we didn't study it in great detail, just due to time. But I think we captured some of the essence of a little bit more downtown look to it than what we did on now. And I think we created the recognizable, this is the fire station entry and the element off on Alpine. Don't need to go that too much, I didn't want to give some character study to it, so. That's as far as we got, this is the choice, obviously, I think there's some improvements that can be made and it'd be kind of exciting to study that. In the in the budget sheet, I kind of covered the same elements as I did in the map. Although the square footage is significantly bigger. And it's primarily because. We're using a big portion of the existing building, which from a sustainability standpoint makes a lot of sense. And where it's functional, it's it's really good, the lower levels is really good, useful, repurposed space. Overall, it's about eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty square feet. With about ten thousand of that being new, new developed space. For the overall. Construction cost, when I, when you look at the map to the main street, it's surprisingly ten thousand dollars difference, which is was astonishing to me. And after I I finished, I looked at this, wow, that's really close. So that part of it's very similar to the. The general conditions and the soft call, well, general conditions are different because it's with accounts for. Existing things could go wrong during construction, so percentages from general conditions are higher. Overhead property contractors, the same escalations, the same. When you get down to construction contingency, it's higher given for this unknown factor of what could happen during construction. There's added costs and professional fees, there's demolition of the building that would be a. The selected demolition port has a little bit more engineering to it. And then the soft costs are greater as well. The big part of that is the move management aspect. If that were going to be reconstructed for a fire, you would have to either find a new location for them to operate out of or share. So there's costs built into that line item for that purpose. In our discussion as a group, we kind of went through, you know, where would that be, is there a place trying to be trying to put some dollars to it really? And in that conversation. It came up that potentially, as we're already saying, we're going to redo the lower level, about twenty two hundred square feet for firefighting purpose. With one bay, that could be the first part of construction. That could be their temporary house during the construction or reconstruction of the rest of it, so there's some. There's some money being spent that could be utilized versus move management costs elsewhere in the city to have temporary housing. So that was the thought, it's that part's not baked into this, what we do have baked into it is that hey, you're going to spend some money more than likely. In the move management process and there's a example, like a soft cost for the map site is sixteen percent. Less than what I would have normally thought. And the as compared to Main Street is twenty seven percent. And then twenty seven percent is is your insurance for risk, it doesn't mean you're necessarily going to spend it. But it's there because you might, that's why that number is. Bigger. So when I get to the bottom line, there's a couple of things that I wanted to be able to say, here are some options to reduce the cost, so we end up lower than our target. Again, the storm shelter is not included because it's not fully required yet. And as I mentioned, the existing lower level could be used as the fitness area, which would reduce the cost that I'm indicated by about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We could reduce the admin, like I suggested at map by two offices, which would reduce about a hundred and twenty thousand. And also like at may have, we could reduce the depth. Of the bays, in this case, it would only be two, the two new bays, so it's a lesser savings, but nonetheless, it's a way to save. And that would put the project cost at that nine million one hundred and ninety six thousand. Which is less than our target. And then there's an option, we talked about. If we remove the obstacles and the unknowns of. Existing conditions, if we took down the building. What would it cost to build a new building, you know, I increased the square footage from what we used that may have from. Fourteen thousand two hundred to fifteen thousand, and I think we could probably do less than that, so the cost could be less than what I'm indicating at nine point three. But that's a safe number from a description standpoint, it's not worked out, but. We have done a new building on this site in some of our previous studies, so I'm confident that. We can come up with multiple schemes on how to do a new building there and save money. But that also would be less than the target. And then the sheriffs, in that lower level, as I indicated, that one rec or more like a square with the six little columns in it. That's around twelve fifty square feet and that cost for build out would be about four sixty, four hundred and sixty five thousand. So when we were done, I think we we ended up with two reasonable. Or or good, actually really good solutions. Uniquely for the main street and. More easily accomplished for map, but both of them achieved the goals and. The goals, including the one for budget. That's kind of my end of my description, if there's any questions, I'd be more than glad to kind of walk through them with you.
Sure, thanks David, I actually have a comment rather than a question, I want to thank both David and Chief Armstrong for the work they did. Over the last two, three weeks on this, there were emails back and forth late into the night, well, early in the morning, even for me when I wake up with Roland. And over the weekend to to make this happen and make it work. One of the other things I want to say is that I had a chance to have a conversation with Chief Armstrong about just general our fire and emergency. Services and it was very reassuring to to learn about his experience, the work he has done as a firefighter, the work he has done. As EMT and the work he has done in building various structures. So that experience and then bringing it to to David was very much evident in going through space by space. Almost every little teeny tiny corner of these two buildings and coming up with with these plans to make sure. That they are operationally sound and needed and there are areas that if they're crucial, they are well pointed out and if there are areas that. Some work can be done, that that was also considered, so I appreciate their work.
Questions for David?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the cost estimates here, so is it. Is it right for the main street project, the all in cost to have the fire station completely done as proposed and the sheriff's option? And the sheriff's option, you would add that nine point five to the four hundred and sixty five and you'd get to a total that's nine point nine nine? You would add those together, is that right?
That would be correct.
Okay, and then at the, so then at the map site, the all in cost where you're doing both the sheriffs there and whatever, you know, building the new fire station to that design. That's like the nine point six.
That's correct.
Now, do we have a number, so if you just a fire station at map, that's the just the nine even and then the. If you refurbished the area at Main Street for the sheriffs, is that. The four sixty five number then from the main street page, is that what that would be estimated at? Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
I can throw a hand. Do we have geotechnical studies of the areas where the additions would be at Main Street? And I ask that because there's slopes which are tricky and there's slopes that have to fill, which makes that even more tricky.
We, I do not have that information. And I don't believe there's any information available. We use, you know, a standard approach in terms of foundation design.
It's a kind of a best case?
A medium. Not not best case, medium. So if there was best case scenario, we'd be better off. That there's also the chance, there's something awful there that we don't know about.
Was there any discussion of using different materials? So I bring that up because as a local government, we can exempt ourselves from our own zoning ordinance and if it says you have to brick, we could do corrugated metal.
I'm aware of that, but I didn't wander off of what. The ordinance is talking about predominantly masonry. If if we were able to explore that a little bit more, costs could be better.
My final question is, will we, I didn't see it in here, but will we have a chart similar to what we've seen previously of how the designs compare with the facility needs assessment?
I missed the beginning of that.
Previously, we had charts comparing facilities, will we be able to get a a chart or matrix or something that compares the the two. Designs against the facility needs assessment?
We can do that, yes, I have not prepared that, but I can do it.
So I'm excited about this, I think these are great. David, you originally asked for a ten week timeframe and we pushed you to do this in about four or five. Unless the cost has gone up, you originally asked for about forty two thousand and you did it for twenty or less, I'm assuming, we're still under budget adjustments?
That's my my understanding.
And I think this is good, it's very good information. I like the thinking, I like the, I like the hand drives along with the more finished one. David, and maybe this is a question more for Doug, if you're still on Doug, maybe you can help unmute Doug, Josh, if you need help on the meeting. The the bay depth of fifty six versus fifty. Elaborate a little bit more on that relative to the aerial. Apparatus and the length of the aerial apparatus and I was under the impression that because of the viaduct, we needed a special apparatus anyway. As opposed to a conventional one.
Yeah, you're you're, hi Sean, you're you're.
Yeah, you're you're, hi, Sean, you're you're correct. Um, the due to the height restriction. Uh, we have to sort of spread the truck out in order to avoid. A height that would prohibit it from passing under the viaduct. So that means a longer truck. So any reduction in base space may create. A situation where we're unable to safely house a vehicle that is able to successfully pass under the viaduct. So I think if there are other options to to look for savings, I'm I'm happy to sort of roll up sleeves and and sit down and and look at those, but but. Relinquishing bay depth would be one of the last I would want to advocate for.
And that's what I wanted to hear. Okay, okay. So it's more likely to, it's better to build the fifty-six foot depth, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Yep. Hi, Doug. I just wanted to follow up on that if I may. Do we currently have an aerial?
We do not.
Okay. And what building is on the other side of the viaduct right now would require an aerial?
Really, the the aerial is is helpful for uh many structures, um any large two-story house. Uh, a barn, uh which we have many of uh in in the townships. So uh there there's definitely utility. Uh, and if we if we have that piece of equipment that uh we certainly want to be able to respond it uh with. Reasonable time and and direct just the most direct route because uh that is a piece of equipment that is critical to get in place first. So you want it to arrive at the scene as as soon as possible, because once the other trucks and hoses start getting in the way. You'll not get the aerial close to where it needs to operate.
Doug, but 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 take that, take that another step further. Tell the council what we talked about at the fire strategic planning session relative to. Operating a vehicle like that. It'd be critical to have it there first, but we have limitations to be able to do that, right?
Correct. I mean, there there are staffing requirements to fully utilize uh the apparatus, which currently we we don't, we we wouldn't meet. Um, at least not as in any single station. So it would take. Uh, sort of a a group response from multiple stations to uh to get enough, to get enough people there. We do have neighbors that have them. So in the short term. Uh, I'm not sure it's the highest priority, but my concern is when it does become a more pressing priority or we are better suited to. Uh, obtain and operate one. Uh, if we don't have the base space, it it's it's pretty difficult to. Adapt that and or add that. Um, that that'll be a significant construction cost.
Yeah, it makes sense to have it now. Jimmy, call.
Yep, yeah, another follow-up. Sorry, this is a bit of a tangent about the aerial. It reminded me of a question someone asked. About the one fifty difference building and they lived on the higher level of that building and it was a life-saving situation. And with right now without the aerial, we'd be relying on mutual aid and perhaps I don't know what our confidence level is that that aid would arrive in time. So I don't know if that's true or not. And then so I guess the follow-up is whether that is or is not true. Are there things that people who are currently now living beyond the reach of our current vehicle should be doing? Like ladders that drop from windows or I mean, I don't know what you could tell somebody who has that concern in the city.
I I I think that's a a very real question and and. You know, a potentially longer discussion, but uh the the ladders that we carry on our trucks are twenty-four feet in length. So uh when you figure average story is probably ten feet. It means we struggle to reach a roof of anything that's over two stories. Um, and so that does for quick rescue. Uh, it it does pose some challenges waiting for a truck to get. Um, here currently from it would either be Pinkney, Chelsea, or Ann Arbor City. SIO is in the process of. Placing an order for an aerial, but it's probably two years uh by the time they. Approve that funding request, move forward with making an order and getting that truck built and in place. So. Uh, I guess the short-term answer is yes, that 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 would be a challenge for us to. Effect a quick rescue from uh from anything uh above about twenty feet.
So then is there anything residents can do? I mean, I guess I have vague memories of these rope ladders that you can somehow affix to a window and.
Yeah, yeah, they have they have rope and they have metal uh sort of chain ladders that that fold up and fit like under a bed and. Um, affixed to the window sill and do provide uh an opportunity to um get out of a an elevated window. Which which are good, e- even if we had a ladder truck is is not uh bad advice for for people to consider those. Um, just because of uh. Uh, the time that it takes to make a phone call, get dispatched, get on scene, get set up. And a ladder truck's not a guarantee uh that you can get to every window that someone might. Be utilizing. Um, you know, if 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 it's a a house with a a walkout basement and they're on the second floor and a master bedroom on the backside. We may not have ability to get a ladder truck back there uh in position. In in any case, so um that's, it's not a bad strategy to have a a personal backup plan.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
So I'm interested in getting this information out into the public and towards to that, there's also a draft. Safety facilities bond knowledge information and that the staff has worked on, Justin. Thank you for putting that together. Would you like to go over that a little bit? Um, can you talk a little bit about it, ask questions? Maybe you have some questions?
Um, yes, also. So so again, uh, thank you to Josh for um his impeccable design skills. Um, a lot of the information is what you saw at the last meeting. Um, but uh. A couple of questions that I did have is based on the conversation tonight, um whether we wanted to put these designs out there and incorporate them as part of. This flyer, maybe add another page or two um to identify, you know, here's here's a nice picture. Here's the proposed cost. Um, for option one, option two, eight one forty, Mav. And I I did, we did put this by um City Attorney Monzel and he he did provide some some thoughts. Which were incorporated into the into the version that you see here. And most of the sauce were avoiding um more communicated language like improve or. Batters or anything like that. Um, so I guess it, does anybody have any any thoughts or feedback on what's provided here?
Jamie?
Yep. One uh suggestion I had for the under what does two mills look like? We referenced this uh a house with a market value of two hundred thousand dollars. I couldn't find it immediately in my notes, but I know I had previously looked up and we had discussed what the actual median market value was. I think it's. Must be somewhat greater than that because I think my estimate of what the annual cost is, I made a note of it, but I don't have it here. It's slightly higher. It might be two fifty-one per year. I just think it might be more representative to report the median value than just maybe random two hundred thousand. So I don't know if that's something that Marie can cross-check or somebody can cross-check. And then. Yeah, I appreciated that.
Also suggested the monthly cost as a perspective.
Yeah, that's more meaningful to me. If there's a way we can put both in there for the people who think annually and the people who think monthly, I would be fine with that addition. And then I do like that we have the historic mill. So thanks for adding that.
Yeah. Um, but I I think, yeah, with like a little bit Maria and and we've definitely updated that to the the median. Um, identify that that is the median and that's provided the monthly.
Why?
I personally think round numbers, regardless of the median, regardless of anything else, the round numbers are just. Easier for people to understand and multiply up for themselves or multiply down for themselves. And in terms of putting more on here, I know I'm on the verge of reading glasses, but I couldn't read this. This is really small. I mean, I can read it now with these giant bright lights on, but like I had in order to look at it and edit it, I had to blow it up to a hundred and fifty on my. Computer and then make edits on it on the physical sheet. Um, so I I mean, and I maybe that's a personal problem, but I I mean, I'm sure there would be other people in that boat. Especially because this is way more legible, but I take it that this with the border at the top is the size it would actually be, correct?
Yeah. So, yeah, so um there 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 are kind of two versions. One is the one not included in the newsletter. And then one is the one included in the newsletter and the newsletter that would have the border. And so we'd have to, you know, work right size. The the flyer to fit the availability.
Yeah. So like I tried to make some edits just to tighten up the language to see if that would even help to try to bump it up like a half point or something. Because it's just, I I don't know if there is a solution or if there's something we can take off altogether. I don't know if anyone else had this concern. It's just me. But adding things and making it smaller is not something I'd like to see.
We can, I mean, we can, we can continue to play with it and um find ways to to increase the the type of font size.
That that that. More as you could, right?
Yeah, I mean, especially in the newsletter, it wouldn't be a problem for two, three pages, right?
No. And especially if we're already adding pages to, you know, include, you know, this information more.
Because this is a standalone, it's a fine size. I this one, I mean, I think this is, this is okay. And I just, you know, I see people getting out magnifying glasses.
Fair comment. A lot of them know, really.
I wasn't just, I I really liked the design and the flow in terms of like uh different sections and such. Um, maybe a little bit less information. Um, and not in terms of, we don't want to be transparent, but maybe less words there. Um, not especially when this is part of a newsletter. If we want people to sit down and read two, three pages, right? Um, we want to make sure that there things are um easier to pick up, they're clearer, they're there's less. They're describing less words in ways that um it's easier to absorb.
Sorry, one follow-up with that in mind. I think that one way to do that is we have here in the first section, why is it on the ballot? We explain what municipalities are in the DAFD. Do we need to repeat that again in other sections? Or can that just be DAFD and that's that? We've already defined it.
And so your thought would be this would be in the newsletter initially on the website?
Yeah. Um, we we could have, and everybody will have questions at the front counter. And so we can have copies that staff can just.
And help.
Give. Then in the email updates, direct folks to that page on the website.
For a motion of some type to proceed.
I I I left the option in there with discussion considerations that I I wasn't sure where the conversation would go. Um, so I wanted to leave that option open, but um I think with the feedback that helpful is giving, I think um. Yeah, we can take that, refine this more and come up with a final draft.
Well, I. Yes, the T-balance are going out. Is there any way we can make some decisions now and get this out there? Because I don't want to wait. I mean, they're they're going out now.
I I I mean, so so my my goal is to get the newsletter to the printer this week.
But I mean, you would need, do you need our approval back in order to make these changes and put it in the newsletter? Can we say with? With these administrative changes, we're fine with it. And if you go on the newsletter, I just don't want it sitting when people have their ballots in their mailboxes.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm confident that they can get it out of councils. I didn't know if you felt like you needed something from us.
I I I think as long as council's comfortable with.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
We could make a simple, I mean, we could have a simple motion directing or asking staff to, you know, to post both options. And the ballot or and the uh the informational piece, you know, as quickly as possible, the newsletter and on the website. So the voters have it. Someone wants to make a motion like that.
I have to do that. Yeah, I'll second that.
In discussion on that? Zach?
I'm not comfortable voting for things where we don't know the full final layout. That's all right. There are a lot of conditions and a lot of changes between here and there. In the text that we're making it there.
Well, the primary goal is to make it legible and factual. Those are the two goals, right? And and to display, the third would be to get the information and the good work that David and his team have done, input from Doug Armstrong and his team.
To Zach's comment, is there anything, can we discuss that now? Is there anything you would say absolutely not? We can't take this out informationally. I mean, because if it's just tightening up language and it gets run back by the city attorney. I mean. I'm not, yeah, I smell like I want to see major, you know, substantial informational changes on this. I just want. To see if and if we can't make it bigger, we can't make it bigger. I mean, I, my point is that I just want it out.
Yeah, and I I'm like, I I'm just, I I am seeing, you know, some blank space. I, it will look more crowded, but.
Yeah, I don't need a micromanage to lay out.
But in the only addition anybody suggested is maybe adding the monthly cost. Did I miss it? You know, we're not trying to add anything more than what's here. So I make sure it's as legible as possible. And and to your point, anything that's repetitive doesn't need to be repeated because it just takes its pace. Okay, I think we got, I think this is good work. David, I want to say again to you and your team, thank you for accelerating. Your efforts to get us to this point. I think this will be very helpful to the the public. Justin, thank you for your work. Doug, thanks for your work. Sanami represented us on that committee. Appreciate that as well. Um, again.
Well, you know, while we're discussing. You know, even though, you know, we're we're moving forward with putting this information out there as as a ballot, you know, in in. As information for the ballot item, you know, at last couple of meetings, council has indicated the desire to keep the conversation moving forward. Um, towards, you know, um narrowing down the options. Just counsel want to continue to see a discussion item regarding the fire station on the next few.
I I just want to see, on the tenth, I would like to see planning for the public meeting. That I think needs to be the next course of action so that we can get this out in over the next couple of weeks. There will be questions. The interest of public to come and we want to do it and talk about that. So I think that's the next. Most important thing.
Yep. So late last week, I was having a conversation with Zach and I I think one reason I don't want to speak for him. What he, the topic he brought up with me was a potential inconsistency in the way the ballot language is worded. And it seems like it's something slight and maybe it's something that doesn't matter. Um, something is worth having a conversation about. So when we discussed. The resolution and then the corresponding bond proposal. I went back and looked and did my best to cross-check the meeting minutes. And so the the bond proposal that we moved to accept that night had some edits to it. But that was our final. So we had a draft, we made some edits and. had a draft, we made some edits, and that was our final sort of acceptance of that. So in that case, we, we approved something before actually seeing it in final. And so in, in that draft, it was the, the draft that Zach put together for that meeting. Part of it says, the cost of acquiring and constructing a new public safety facility singular. And we made changes, I went back to the meeting minutes, we made changes to a variety of spots, but we never made a change where we changed facility singular to facilities plural. I don't know if that is substantively meaning, is that a distinction without a difference? Does that matter? Because our current bond language, what we have in the ballot says public safety facilities.
I think if you remember the context of that discussion, one of the actions that was discussed at the time was you could potentially build a new facility on one site and renovate the other. So that's facilities. And this is, this, this language was flexible for that.
Right. So I went back to the meeting minutes, and it's not that, I don't see where that took what the meeting minutes. So I, I don't know.
So, so, so in, in, to, to, to the point of, you know, it was a very quick turnaround between council adoption and setting it off to the county. I, I, I actually would have liked an additional meeting to be able to present the final draft and let helpful comment on it. But Steph, I think we, we did our best with number one, taking what was specifically outlined and trying to turn that into the final ballot language. But one of the points of discussion was keeping it as flexible as possible that, that night. And so I, I did my best to interpret council's intent and move the ballot ballot language forward to get it to the county, to get it on the ballot.
So. When we took the location out, a specific location, it's a singular. If we are taking, when we took that out to provide us options, last I checked, it English grammar needs to be facility.
Zach? Yeah, I can speak for myself that, yeah, this is, it is concerning. I would hope that any resolution we adopt is part of the minutes that we get to double check it. Facility and facilities are different. There's substantive differences between them. We were asking for money for one place, not to do projects in two places. And council is the body that adopts. Staff shouldn't be editing. That's all. We've been very clearly in the minutes said, here are the things that we're changing.
Well, nobody noticed that distinction at the time. I mean, does anybody disagree that we talked about multiple options? I mean, I clearly remember talking about the possibility of renovations at more than one place or where if we didn't move sheriffs renovating there, you not remember that? Jamie?
We did talk about it. If you look at our meeting minutes, though, so I guess there's a discrepancy between, because the minutes are supposed to accurately reflect what the motion was. And so there's a motion here, and it says with the following changes, and it very specifically outlines them, and that's not one of the outline changes. I get what you're saying. I'm not necessarily saying I disagree with the current ballot language is. I'm not saying I disagree with that. That's what we talked about. I just want to make sure that, and I just want to say, I can relate to being nervous about approving something without actually seeing the final, especially if there's a, if there is an actual substantive disagreement with what happened in this context. So I just, you know, I'm trying to reconcile. We have meeting minutes that outline a very specific motion with very specific edits. Yet this was a specific edit that's not captured there. So I don't know if maybe the motion wasn't captured accurately, maybe that was part of the motion, and it's just not captured accurately in the minutes. Something else happened.
I don't think it's captured accurately in the minutes. Nobody noticed it.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, because you're the one, clerk, and I, clerk, and I, minutes can be altered anytime, at any time at any meeting. If there was a mistake in the minutes, they can be corrected. And any court could do that. I'm not picking on Pam, because I got bitten on a lot every now and then. Somebody tried to save her from getting it, but they can be fixed anytime. So if we, what we did at that time was our intent, and that's not within the minutes, I believe we could correct that.
I agree. I think you're right.
Well, Justin did sound right.
I think we can only correct it at that meeting following.
I think it's typically.
I don't think that's true, but check it out.
Wow. Can we just, okay, I mean, I agree that especially with the ballot language, it is very important. And would I have liked to seen it again? Yes, absolutely. Did we have that luxury? No, we did not. I, I, I think we're talking about two very different things here. This is an information sheet that needs to get out to a third of the voters that are going to have their material, their ballot in front of them in, you know, by sometime this week, probably. Can we just vote on this?
We can.
Yep. I just want to say that we didn't have to be in this position of a time crunch. And I'm, I feel like there were a number of times I said, I'm ready to get to this part of the conversation. It's part of the conversation. I understand. We're all in this conversation together. In the future, I would really like it if we could, as we plan contingencies and costs of projects, if we can plan for contingencies and the time we have to discuss things, because these are important issues, whether it's what's on the ballot or what we're telling people about that's on the ballot. Those are important things, and we should afford ourselves the time to have those conversations.
We've only had three years.
And yet we're still here at the eleventh hour. I don't understand.
I, I don't think we should try to let that subtlety affect all the good work that's been done to bring this to this point.
We have to be able to talk about that.
You can't talk about it. I think you can't talk about it. I think we are talking about it.
Yeah, and I'm sorry.
I'm not against talking about it, Jamie. I just think that, like, you started off by saying, maybe it's a subtlety, and I think I'm agreeing. It's, it's not, it's a minor difference.
I'm not saying let's vote on it, because we shouldn't talk about, people want to talk about actual changes that they want to make to this sheet. Let's talk about it. Let's give Justin specific changes, but nobody's offering anything. We're just talking about.
Talking about something we can't change.
Exactly.
Jamie?
Because it seems unclear. I think the potential that exists is that in going and making these tweaks that we are explicitly mentioning, a tweak that we haven't explicitly mentioned gets made either intentionally or unintentionally. And I don't know how you protect against that besides.
Seeing the final draft.
Right.
And we all, we all saw the final draft and didn't notice it was different there in the special in the minutes.
Of the.
We all saw, we all saw the final minutes, and none of us noticed that it was, that it was not maybe what we thought it should be. Or actually, I thought it was what it should be, but I didn't realize it was different there than here. So, yeah, please call the vote on this motion.
Can you tell me what exactly?
It was motion by you, or by Sanam, second by Juan, to instruct staff to get the information that partners and architects put together, as well as the bond mileage information out into the newsletter. Yes.
May I read what I've written so far?
Sure.
Picture reflects what you'd like. Motion, Rob, support Hubbard to postpone public safety facilities options and the informational piece in the newsletter and on the website.
Yeah, and, and any other areas that need to be, I mean, it could be at the front column.
Yeah, I would say something to the effect of two direct staff to make administrative changes to the informational pieces. And post the informational piece and facilities options in the newsletter and other appropriate locations.
Thank you very much for helping. After, Pam, when you're ready, please call the vote.
Michelle. Fisher. Yes. Rob. Yes. Hubbard. Yes. Griffin. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, we are on to what I guess is now M2. A consideration of formally excusing small cousins' absences. So, excuse, council member presence from July 25th, August 8th, August 22nd, September 12th, regular, and tonight, regular city council meetings. Doing a reason in summary.
So.
Motion by Charles.
I spoke with Mr. Chris in favor of this.
In special.
Sure. Um, I, I don't know if Paul is able to join us for the next few meetings. And in that sense, do, do we usually leave this just for the missed ones, or can they be given for the future ones missing as well? Just asking what there's, what are the ballot pieces or what's not right?
You know, I, normally, if we've heard from the person before they come to the meeting, I simply say they're not going to be at the meeting, and that's in my version. That's in their excuse with reason. That's what we've typically done. Like tonight, I said, Pauls are going to be here. You don't pretend I don't have to do tonight. Assuming I hear from somebody else here showing him prior to the next two meetings, we won't need to do this again. But since we didn't do anything since he was here last, this is appropriate in its simplest way. Scott, please call the vote.
Michelle.
Yes.
Rob. Yes. Hubbard. Yes. Griffin. Yes. Fisher. Yes. Keel.
Yes. New business item M2, now three, discussion of council member Fisher's eligibility for office. Jamie asked if this item will be on the agenda, so I will let you introduce where you.
Sure. I have a few minutes to type something up. It usually helps me get my thoughts together. So if you don't mind that I will be reading it. I understand that emotions are high. The question of what it takes to be eligible for council is an important question, and it's one of consequence. And we are elected to have difficult conversations. And although it might be uncomfortable, I have no problem taking flak at a council meeting for raising a resident concern. That's part of the job. I'm here to be their voice. In my council member report in this packet, I mentioned how one way we can prevent deter crime is to get to know your neighbors. I also referenced the neighborhood watch program, which pretty much literally asks you to watch or otherwise surveil your neighborhood. In that letter, I stated, together you can help monitor the area in and around your home and their businesses. You will learn if you haven't already what types of behaviors and activities are typical, so that you can better recognize those that are suspicious. Although it was suggested otherwise, I want to be clear that you can keep an eye on what's going on in your neighborhood, often without even trying. And happening to know the comings and goings of your neighbors makes you observant and nothing else. For example, more people are working home now than ever before. Perhaps the floor plan of your house affords you a good view of your street. Mine certainly does. I know the comings and goings of my neighbors, not because I'm trying, but because I'm in and around my house much of the time. With respect to this agenda item, a question was raised by a resident. I couldn't answer it, so I reached out to Justin. His response did not provide a definitive answer and actually began by alerting me to how I would go about bringing the matter to council's attention. I then reached out to Donna, but did not get a reply. A few days later, I reached out to the mayor and also did not receive a definitive answer. It was less than two years ago that Julie Knight resigned her position because she was going to be spending a significant amount of time out of town. So when this question came to me, I immediately thought of that. Clarification on the issue of whether and to what extent being out of town affects one's eligibility for council is relevant to all of us at this table, and it's relevant to any future council member. Although a specific council member is the motivating example, I don't want this conversation to be about this person or her specific circumstances unless or until it becomes clear, following the consultation of our legal counsel, that we need to do so. When a resident reaches out to the city to complain about a neighbor's long grass or unshovelled sidewalk, the complainant's name is only shared if legal proceedings become part of that resolution. In my view, this is a similar situation. If we end up pursuing some specific action regarding Donna's specific eligibility, the complainant's name would become public. But again, my hope is that we can begin by getting some clarity on this issue from our legal counsel. I see that Scott is in attendance. Is maintaining a principal residence exemption sufficient for maintaining eligibility for council? Could I maintain my PRA, travel extensively, but return for public meetings and still be eligible for council? I honestly don't know. And that's what I'm hoping to get clarity on tonight. So again, I mentioned that I see that Scott's here. My preference would be to begin by hearing from him.
Adam? Similarly to Mrs. Griffin, I also like to write all my thoughts down before I say them. And I'm sorry to lag from your question, but I just think this is really important, and my job as Senate representative is to give my opinion, and that's what I'm going to do. So the idea of false accusations without a name signed by the accuser is very sickening to me. If you couldn't tell by the sweatshirt and the sticker on my computer, I'm an officer for the Dexter Drama Club. Last year, after a winter production of Romeo and Juliet, there was a letter, letter to the editor published in the Sun Times bashing our production. This letter was signed concern grammar. If you have the audacity to make such claims and accusations, it is vital that you sign your name, and I cannot stress that enough. I would like to thank our non-arranged participants for giving their point of view on the situation. I think it's important to see our citizens' opinions on the situation, especially long time citizens. I'm in full support of Mrs. Fisher's eligibility to remain on this board, and all the evidence I need to make that statement is in Mayor Keel's well-written email on page 93 of your packet. Mr. Michelle's and Ms. Mrs. Griffin, please be careful while bringing such accusations to the attention of not only the council, but also the city. These accusations are not light, and we'll stick with Mrs. Fisher and anyone who gets this information about said accusations. Lastly, thank you, Mrs. Fisher, for your dedication to this council.
Thank you, Adam. Council comments or discussion?
Well, I guess I got broken. My. Well, my intent in contacting was not to have it on the agenda item. I want to investigate. As, as was mentioned, in code enforcement, we take anonymous complaints and we investigate. That's what we do. It's part of the thing. My background, those who've had conversations with me know that I believe your background, shape your worldview and how you perceive and process the world. I worked in the land, in the land use planning control, although where it's important to follow processes. It's important, if you have someone seated on the planning commissioner's EVA who's not eligible, the decision of the body goes away. So I would also add that what I heard matched what I have observed. I have a three-year-old puppy Labrador Wally who has tons and tons of energy, and we take him for walks. I don't take him for as many walks as my wife does, but Grand and Inverness is on one of our typical routes. We usually go by there once or twice a week. In the past year, I have not seen a car parked out front a single time. And there are times, well, I have not seen it. I'm not saying it's not there, but it's at times where I would have expected cars to be there. So that corroborated what I had heard. And the question here isn't quality of person or what they've done or if Dexter is in their heart. There's really three questions. What does residency mean for election law in Michigan? Does a person need that, and this council want to do anything about? Because even though there are no outsider charter police, we are the charter police. This is our constitution. We have to follow. I will leave with a comment I've heard from someone who's, I forget his name, but he's pretty high up in the US judicial system. He said, if you make, if you never make a decision that you don't like, you're not a good judge. There are times when the facts and the law layout, and you don't like how it looks, or what, what decision you make. I'm done.
I'll go on and then go back to you, Adam.
Okay, a couple of things. This is, if this is something that, all right, let me step, let me separate it. I would like to hear from Scott as well, because if this is something that we want to discuss, I want to know what he has to say about it from a legal standpoint. I, I personally think there's not a reason to even be having this discussion about this particular individual, knowing what I know, because I also pay attention to. Knowing what I know, because I also pay attention to my neighbors and my friends and where they are and what they do and, you know, I, I pay attention. With that said, the time that, that Donna was mostly away from her house was a long time ago. So why did this not come up then? Why is this coming up now in the 11th hour by somebody who just said they don't want to discuss things in the 11th hour? I, I, the timing of this stinks to me and that's all I have to say. And I would like to hear from Scott.
Quickly, I would just like to clarify, Mr. Michelle, who were not roped into this by being on this council and emailing Mayor Keo, you submitted yourself to this conversation.
Um, a couple of things. One is the, the question of timing. I agree with Ms. Hubbard of when this came out. This was not an issue until Ms. Fisher sent her farewell card to her supporters in the community. And on that, she was clear of her choice on the mayoral candidate. So for me, seeing Mr. Michelle really getting himself involved in this, first is a public of interest. Second is really bad timing of putting himself with, with this. And if that's the intention, then speak volumes. When somebody brings accusations, the burden of proof is on that person that brings accusations. From the conversations and the communications that Ms. Griffin has brought about. There was no set of proof. In this time, this was checked. In this time, this was happening. There was nothing. It's all about saying something and asking the accused to prove just an accusation. So the burden is with this person who does not want to be named. And in their proxy, as she has chosen to be their proxy, Ms. Griffin. So I have a few questions. If, um, it's okay for, for Ms. Griffin. This, does this person work?
I don't know.
Does this person sleep?
Presumably, yeah.
Does this person have surveillance cameras set on Ms. Fisher's house?
I don't know.
Does this person go for walks?
I'd like to end up this line of questioning for just a minute.
You are breaking these questions. At all those times, if a person is asleep, they can't watch Ms. Fisher's house. If this person works, they can't do that. Miss, their Michelle said the same thing, of they walk the dog. It's a very specific time, maybe on that is specific time, Ms. Fisher is not around. Mr. Mitchell's, from what I know, works outside of the city of Dexter. So they cannot have a 24-hour view of Ms. Fisher's house. In the packet, there was a sentence from Ms. Griffin's email. Unlike Justin, this resident is in a position to keep track of council member Fisher's comings and goings, because the resident lives in close proximity to Donna. What does close proximity means? At the beginning of Inverness is a close proximity. Can they watch Donna 24/7 from that proximity? Actually, I would add 24/8 because holidays count as well. So again, the burden of proof of something like this is on the person that is bringing the accusations and the timing of it is, is very telling. This is not the first time this line of questioning and this line of accusations has come to this council and this city. And it's very, very unfortunate, but also very telling that we are seeing these sort of things only from one council member and only from one person that has brought it to the city. This is, we are talking about somebody who has served this city honorably for over 30 years. In variety of capacities. Again and again, who their loyalty, their work, their dedication to the city. And for us in the last three meetings, bring this up while you had the chance of doing this for months and months. Is very telling of your character.
Yeah. So using plain language. The things that I'm being accused of were just demonstrated there. There's an assumption of intent. I did not know about Ms. Fisher's postcards until I was speaking with her the other day. I had no idea. So that assumption, you're assuming mal-intent. I have never assumed mal-intent. I, if you look through my messages, I'm like, hey, can you check with council? Election law is weird. There's natural thing in the bottomless sense. I think if we're afraid to talk about tough things. That's, that's.
Tough things and ugly things are two different things. Tough things and grimy things. To smear somebody's character after 30 years is a very different thing. You did that as our city manager. You're doing that.
I, I will not stand for that. That's ridiculous.
I know, I know. Over the last two years. I've worked really hard to bring this council together, especially on the issue we just spent 45 minutes on, which is going before the public. Okay, we have worked really well together. We may have our differences. But we've always, I thought, tried to give each other the benefit of the doubt on some of the stuff, you know? And. Jamie, when you, when you emailed me. You know, with the question, I did the best I could in time and place that I was to provide an answer to you and you moved Justin back in and then you said put on the agenda and I thought, okay, if it's going on, you made the request. I wasn't going to try and talk you out of it. I don't, I don't have a problem talking about anything with you guys. I trust all of you. And, and when Zach followed up, I did the best I could with, with his request to answer his question and, you know, sharing all that here in the packet so that you could see the dialogue, I think was important too. But we're. I don't think there's that much doubt here. I mean, somebody's lived here for 40 years or more. I already know that over Donna, sorry. It's a long time and I don't know what, I don't know what the denominator is. I, I don't. Yeah, I don't, I don't understand the denominator in which you can subdivide a portion of time like that and say, all of a sudden, this person is no longer here and they're subject to that. It just doesn't make sense to me. It, it, it's a, it's a, it's looking at, it's looking at the world in a narrow scope of glasses. And. You know, I've known Donna for a long time. 18 years, I think, since, um, she actually brought the ballot and the campaign stuff to my house, because that's what the clerk did in those days when you called for one, they brought the petition that you signed to the house. I think this has been blown way out of proportion, unfortunately, at the. You know, we all have a feeling personally as to this, but. You know, you know, there isn't anything here that points to something that says she wouldn't be a resident. I mean, did all the definitions that are in here, whether it's for a resident or P R E exemption, the definition of resident. I mean. When you have things going on in your life and you, you go to other parts of the world, whether, whether it's for travel or for healthcare or for loved ones that are sick. I just think that we, we elevated something that we did not need to elevate. Okay, and that, as, as well as we're working together. I, I don't see any, I think, I think the. I, I don't want to see it go any further, frankly. I, I, I think that you would, you would know more so than this example, there is a problem in Syria.
I want to add a couple of facts to the discussion. The resident reached out to me on September 11th at 3:00 P. M. I emailed Justin on September 11th at 6:41 P. M. I have received no mail from Ms. Fisher.
I am in high operation and I was not into my computer. And by the time I got in there to take messages, because I couldn't see, because I had the screen cover on, I, I thought I, I was shocked by it. I was disappointed by it. And then I got a hold of Zach's information and to me it felt like there was a pattern. The same kind of thing happened in court. Throw all this stuff out there, throw stuff out on her, none of it's true. Throw it out there and see what you can do. And so I didn't feel very good about it. I also was extremely disappointed in Zach. I invested a lot of time. I tell people, the reason I'm fat is because I had to eat so many pieces of pie for pie shop, getting to know Zach and developing. All right, thank you. And I have never fought with Zach about anything. I think if he's honest with you, he will tell you that he has confided some things to me and I never outed him on any of them. And I still have not done that. I believe that this is as much directed at Get Sean Keo. This is an election year. I believe that it was in Zach's, it said, and then there will be a big thing and you mean you don't talk to Donna Fisher, you don't know where she lives. All of that, there's enough of that. I could probably talk about that for another hour. The fact of the matter is, is that is my home. I just had it fixed last year before I got, uh, to have the steps made so that I could get in and out of the house. I don't intend to go anywhere. I take my mail there, I vote there, I come back and forth. Sometimes I stay overnight, sometimes I'm there in the daytime. Oh, by the way, all my mail goes there too and I get my mail there. I don't, I can't imagine anybody thinking my life is so exciting that they wanted to track it. And I'm a rather private person. And so you may want to talk to your neighbors, you may want to check on them. That's not me and I never told all of you what was going on with me. But right now, I had a daughter who has had a recurrence of cancer. Right now, I have a mom who's 98. She's close to not recognizing me all the time. Now it's just hard time. And I go there. I'm an only child, no husband, two daughters. The three of us take care of my mom. There is a home where my mother vacated to be her home, to go into a, a rest home, an assisted living. My mom pays all her own bills. I don't pay for anything there. My computer in, at my internet service, my television, everything is in my home. Now, if you had contacted me about that, unless I take issue with you, you told me that you had, I had not, I refused to get on. I, I, she refuses to take my calls.
I said, I've been unable to.
Now, I can go back and look at that. And I've given up. She won't take my, she won't take my calls and I've given up. And so when I went back and checked that out, that's not true. And then you sent me one this week that said, oh, it was Donna LaCinsy. Do you think she was blocking your calls?
She doesn't answer as regularly.
Well, once again, I don't want to go any farther with that stuff. I live here, folks. I intend to stay here as long as I can. And I think that what has happened to me, I feel like I've been caught in something that had much more to do with it being an election year than it did have to do with knowing the law, defining residency. And right now, you're asking me, the first thing you said to me was, I needed to refute, as a term you use, you need to refute this. And I thought, in the hell am I refuting? What did I do that was not right? Now, here's the deal. I come, I go, anytime in the night, if they call me, I go there. And so I can go and do anything that I want to do. Now, if I don't show up here prepared, you probably have a gripe. But I don't understand how you put yourself in the role of determining what is residency. And I'm disappointed in that because I've worked really hard to work well with you, Jamie. I've tried really hard to extend myself to you. I thought things were okay. I was stunned when I got here. I don't need to say this stuff. Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm more private. I'm not going to check on my neighbors. It's not my style.
Well, unless there's a council member that is looking to make a motion, which we would need to do most likely on another agenda. I'd like to move on from this. Jamie?
I would like to get input from legal counsel. I don't know how to make that happen. I, it needs to be, I mean, this is just a discussion. So I don't know if we could get a discussion or a consideration item on a future agenda where we talk about eligibility for office in general and whether and to what extent. What is required? Is it just the P R E? Is it just, you know, is it just what's explicitly stated in the charter? Um, that you've looked here for a year that it's the P R E? I mean, could somebody have their P R E and do Airbnb's around the state and come back for meetings and they're eligible for council? I don't know. That's a question I don't know. I'd like to get back to people. It seems like that's a legal question.
Well. I would like to clarify that if that is on a future agenda, which I wouldn't mind seeing, I only want to talk about it in general terms. I do not want to talk about it in turn, in relation to this agenda item, because as I stated before, I don't think this holds any power.
Did Jamie have a bet? Sure. Sometimes, pardon, I'm not sure. Sometimes. You could inquire, like, I don't know. They often have opinions on stuff that is free.
I did reach out to election officials and they said, of course, charter cities, it goes with the charter. But if you look at the Michigan Voting Act, it gets really squirrely. Our charter doesn't really define it, whether you're voting, voting, it says case law, which is a really big point. And the reason why that's important is the facts vary and differ. There are specific carve-outs for when people are not present at their place of residence, when they're in military service, there are specific carve-outs. So my reason for inquiry is we ought to notice, because it seems like a very litigated area of law. It is a big deal. It's a case in one of the U.S. representative races now in the state of Michigan. There was a clerk that, Amy McComb, that was removed because of it. It's important.
Well, we certainly know what makes you eligible to run for office. That part's not unclear, right? Well.
It doesn't say anything about, I guess. Yeah, I don't know.
That was a question two years ago for one of the candidates as well. Okay, I'm going to move on to new business item M4. But we're going to renumber this. The consideration of commitment to fund balance, a fund balance to public safety facilities project. So Justin, on this one, just, oh, I want to ask, you would like us to make a formal motion and you've suggested. The motion at the bottom will be, and, and essentially what that does is it moves the 300,000 previously part of our capital costs, merges it with the 188,000 that we have. And you're suggesting we take the 508,000 that was added to the 2021 fund balance through the, whatever, through surplus?
Yep. That, 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 that was my understanding, what council was looking for.
To get to basically 997, 697. Is there someone that's wanting to make that motion?
I'm.
Okay, motion by Fisher.
Yeah, it's this one here, the proposed motion. City council is asked to consider, can I move that we make the commitment of $1 million in general fund, fund balance towards the public safety facilities project, incorporating the allocation of previously committed amounts of 188,840 dollars and 92 cents and another $300,000.
Motion by Fisher, second, I said on, so that essentially you're going to then have a new, what are you going to call it, preferred or reserved account? What are you going to call it, preferred or reserved account?
Committed.
Committed?
Yep.
Okay. Zach? I have a question about the ninety thousand dollars we're short for Second Street, is that going to take a bite out of this, or where is that coming from?
It would, that would come out of the water, so, so it would not impact.
So just eating those down.
Correct, yeah, although, I, I believe that we do still have ARPA funds. And it was my intent going into the project that we would use the ARPA funds for Second Street project, and I thought was that. The Second Street project would eat all of the ARPA funds. The project came, came, initially came in under budget, or came in under, under the projected amount. And so it wouldn't have used all of their funds. But with the additional amount for Second Street now, it's looking likely that it would use all of their funds.
The second question is, is a technical question, the hundred eighty eight was dedicated to fire station. Is this motion to dedicate it to public safety facility or facilities and take it out of that sequestered pot? To a different sequestered pot with different limitations?
The, the, the thought is that, I mean, right now, it's sitting there, you know, labeled as fire station. It would basically just change the label from fire station to public safety facilities.
And one last question, has city staff contacted university or federal officials about securing other monies? Of the project, okay, my, my tip is that it's not called earmarks anywhere, it's anymore, it's community directed funding. And I found Mr. Peter's office has been the most responsive so far.
So Representative, I, I did reach out to Representative Dingle's office last year. No, earlier this year.
She's kind of in a tight spot, she can't do anything until after.
Yeah. And so, there, there, there is potential through, through that source, there are. I want to say it's our grants, but.
It's safer in the, the rates that can go towards equipment inside. And it was just earmarks.
Other comments on the topic? I think this is a huge step. It's really important. This campus has no hope to improve the commitment of fund balance to public safety facilities?
Griffin, yes, yes, Arra, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, it was the M five, consideration of. The thirty forty five broad redevelopment agreement with common sale. A council member would like to make the suggestion motion, so we can.
I move to accept the recommendation of the D A to authorize Mayor Kier to execute the thirty forty five. Broad Street redevelopment agreement with the Dexter D D A and.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Sure. Thank you. In your package, you have a predevelopment agreement, you have seen this go through its different iterations. The final iteration was very minor, excuse me. It consisted of removing a blank space regarding who the engineer would be for common sale. As I outlined in my memo, the D D A has reviewed it, approved it, authorized their chairman to sign it. And has recommended approval for you, and, excuse me. Excuse me. The agreement does the following, it identifies the five parcels that comprise the thirty forty five Broad Street. Project area, it establishes city goals for the redevelopment of these five parcels. It identifies that common sale development group, it identifies their development team. It provides a developer with an exclusive six month option period. In which undertake what is commonly referred to as due diligence activities. And it requires the submittal of a sum of money, twenty five thousand dollars, known as, identified as the option price. By the developer for that exclusive ring. It prescribes remedies in the event of the default termination. Or termination of the agreement, it guarantees one four month extension. Provided that the developer is making. Progress, there's good faith effort being demonstrated, and that would be a decision that both the D D A and city would make. If and agree, if and request for an extension were to be submitted. In the event that the developer does request a second extension, the option price becomes non-refundable. It also, the agreement outlines the activities to be undertaken by the developer and the city and D D A during that option period. Prescribes a sixty day negotiation period during which the city and D D A, as well as the developer. Can come to terms on the purchase price for the property. And then it outlines the steps the developer must take after the option negotiation period are done. And then, of course, it has the regular legal terms and binding elements. Did all agreements with, we have, it was reviewed and approved, and with that, with the, the help of city attorney Scott Manziel. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
No one, it's a meeting.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay.
And I instantly, I'm gentle, I don't. During, I don't know if it was during this discussion, but the D D A did discuss the sidewalk along Forest of Jeffersons.
That was in their report.
Okay, and.
So you were out of town, so I don't think you required that, but I could be wrong. The D D A, because they were in the process of working with common sale toward a develop, predevelopment agreement. Did not feel that it was appropriate, excuse me, to grant an easement for the sidewalk extension at this time. Depending on the progress of the developer as this moves forward, should you agree to it tonight, they did. State that they would be willing to consider again the request in March or April, so it's not like it's a dead deal. It's just something they'd like to hold on.
Yeah, that was in your report, there were no questions on that before.
Yes.
Okay, so no questions on the. Predevelopment agreement, that's excellent, please follow up to approve.
Arra, yes, Hubbard, yes, Fisher, yes, Griffin, yes, Michelle.
Yes.
Kio.
Yes, motion carries. Michelle, thank you for your work on that, as well as the D D A and Mr. Manziel, always in the audience, Scott, thanks for your help there.
So I just wanted to say thank you, this is, this is a representative for common sale, Eric, too, thank you very much.
Oh, thanks, Eric.
And we look for, yeah, and we look forward to working with you guys.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, have a good evening.
As well. Our last new business item is consideration of setting a public hearing for the lease ordinance for eighty fifty Main Street. The proposed date is for October twenty fourth. Is your motion acceptable here?
I move instead of public hearing.
Discussion needed on this?
So I, I did want to mention that I did meet with Scott from Hotel Hikman. He doesn't want, Eric, he, at the time, he didn't want it spread, but he is apparently looking to retire. And he's looking at selling the business. And so he thinks that, that there is someone who is interested in taking over the business that, that is Hotel Hikman. At eighty fifty Main Street, and they may be the person that we would.
End up dealing.
End up entering into the lease with. He, he's thinking sooner rather than later, they just based on the conversations. But after I met with him, he was going to take the, our discussion back to that person. And let them know what we had discussed. I don't know, if, if council had any, if there's any thought to the numbers that I included in, in the memo. As far as the, the monthly rent. It would be.
But he wants to renew the lease, right? At this point, right?
Correct, okay.
I had heard that he sold the building before a flower shop. That's not confirmed, but I heard that.
So, so when, when, when we met, and I don't know when, when he heard that versus when we met, but he was. In conversation was with someone else to potentially sell the flower shop.
It means he could just be leasing it back from them, it's not a big deal.
Well.
It makes sense if he's trying to get out of the business, because he owned that property.
And then, and that's what he had indicated, that the person that he was talking with to sell the flower shop. He, he wanted to make sure that who he sold it to would rent it back to Hotel Hikman.
Okay, any more discussion relative to the public hearing, setting up a public hearing? This panel, please call who?
Michelle.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes, Griffin, yes, Arra, yes, Fisher, yes, Kio.
Yes, motion carries, council comments this evening, starting with Jamie.
Yep, I'd like to ask Pam to transcribe this verbatim for the pack that it's something I can send you via email following the meeting. My role on council is to advocate for residents, when they reach out with concerns, I do my best to address them and to get the answers they need. I know my motivations. My family and friends can attest to my character. Will I get it right every time? No. In hindsight, I would have revised this to be an agenda item about council eligibility in general. Although it's not hard to imagine that my motivations for doing so even then would have been challenged. It is clear some on council and in the community still harbor ill will, still harbor ill will towards me. That's your and their prerogative, at the same time, there are many more in the community whose trust I have earned. I want to close by reciting a passage by Theodore Roosevelt that has motivated me in times past and comes to mind tonight. It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood. Who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause. Who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly. So that his place shall never be with those cold, intent souls who neither know victory nor defeat. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Michelle.
My reflections are, are not going to be Roosevelt based, either Roosevelt, but. I am going to be more guarded with frank conversations that, that I have with staff and, and Mr. Kio. That's all.
I'm sure, a few comments, I think. To me, tonight's biggest agenda item and the most important for our city was the discussion on fire station. It is very unfortunate to see that. Even though we started that discussion first, that just the rest of the agenda. And the atmosphere it created impacted the fantastic, amazing work that has been done by this council. By the group that came together, but by partners in architecture and the fire department. To move this item forward, we have two amazing plans to put at front of our residents. To see where we want to move forward with this. So that's, that's to me, the work that we have done, and it's an amazing thing that is done. And it, it is very unfortunate that it did not have the joyous atmosphere. That it was, it should have had. On the, another point for me. I have been running operations for various levels of library at the University of Michigan. For the last fifteen years, so I'm very familiar with see something, say something training. Every August for my now team of about fifty two, we do the, the training fully for all of them. New and returning team members, and the University of Michigan Police Department comes and does that for us. It was put in, in the report, it's a very small phrase, but I want to bring up. That one of the first and foremost things of see something, say something, to be careful that we are not profiling anyone. And making sure that things that we are doing is not to surveilling. Our neighbors and community, but actually keeping an eye for things and behaviors that are suspicious. It's a very, very fine line of seeing something and profiling, and that's the first thing in the training that, that they tell you. I appreciate the Theodore Roosevelt quote, I think a lot of it shows the dedication that Ms. Fisher has done for this town. For the last thirty years, and. I am sorry for this coming down, but I want to also thank you for the service you have done for our community for all these years.
Ms. Fisher?
Sure, I'll keep it brief, so as I said before, no problem discussing and clarifying. What constitutes eligibility for office, and Jamie, I'm glad that you clarified in your comments that, you know. In hindsight, that could have been done here, because I believe that absolutely could have been done here, and that could have satisfied the residents' concern. Just saying, we'll take it, you know, we can talk about it at council, clarify with legal, and then if there actually was an issue. Then we could go from there. I. It's just, it really, it's been really upsetting to me, coming up to this meeting, to think that we couldn't have just done that. And instead, we had to single out somebody who was born and raised here, and who has served this community in public service for thirty plus years. And who's done so with her whole heart, and who will continue to do so, even when she's not in office anymore. And so, Donna, thank you, I mean, you have mentored me through a lot of things here in Dexter, and I appreciate everything you've done for me. Outside of what you do for the community. And I guess, that's all I really have to say about that, I would also like to sort of piggyback on what Sam said, and. Just say that I, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to get something out to the public, so that. They can understand where we're coming from with this ballot language, and we can, you know, hopefully. Well, we will get a resolution on what they're thinking through the vote, and we go from there with this, and I'm. I am pleased that we were able to work together to finally get that question out there to the people, to do what they have to say.
Thank you. Bonnie?
I found that this council has restored a lot of my hope in the government. For a long time, I found it to be almost Kafkaesque in the level of, we get bogged down in politics. So seeing you all work together solving problems that I think are so directly related to the community has inspired me a lot. And this even made me want to look at a future in politics when I had never considered it before. Which is part of the reason I think it was so disappointing, disappointing, or heartbreaking even. Which is part of the reason I think it was so disappointing, disappointing or heartbreaking even to see so much time spent on a topic I felt like had no or little consequence to the people in this community, uh, fact that the agenda item was even brought up, especially when we have so much other stuff on our plate that we like muted. Uh, on a separate note, on the composting presentation, we saw as a person who sixteen plants now, indoor plants, uh, and would love to get local fertilizer, who lives in an apartment. I live in an apartment. I can't compost outside. People would probably riot outside of our house if we made a composting bin that smelled that bad. Uh, I would love the opportunity to buy composting. Have a place.
Thank you, Bonnie. Dan?
Um, thank you, everyone, for a good move, meeting. I think we made a lot of good decisions tonight. Um, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Fisher again for the work you've done for our city. Um, I would also like to inform everyone that I will not be present at our next meeting due to Tech Week for Dexter Drama Club's production of The Line in Which the Wardrobe. I hope that you all can make it to our production, which is from the twentieth to the twenty third of October. I know how hard drama shows, so I encourage council members to support the Dexter Drama Club.
Thank you, Adam. We are back around to not arrange participation. I'll start for the audience. You ready to hand first, buddy?
All right.
Uh, name and address, please.
Rachel, three five three nine Hudson.
Thank you.
City of Dexter. First, I want to acknowledge this group's fervor to answer. That's something I admire personally. You feel that there's something needed to be said. You dug it and it's the same thing I had to done. My other thing is now that we know there's a shortcoming in the charter to a certain extent, maybe we can address that in some kind of way. I imagine you already working on it, Jamie. You are very by the book, which is something I miss you, but that's the way you are. And that's can be a real help to this council because somebody needs to see the law. The law is the law. You don't want to get caught later because you wanted to skip over something. Here we are. So I'll do that. You have heard. No shit. Now, Donna, I can't say what's this or that. I don't know what polluted of precluded on that. I don't really care. Um, however, somebody made the point, she did her due diligence as she should do. Now, the way she did it may not have been the way I done. But I'm not Jamie and Jamie's Jamie. There ain't nothing wrong with the way she did it. That's just the way she does it. So you gotta dig around sometime. And if you don't get the answer you want, then there's something matter with the charter. So put some damned, some definition in there. So this can be avoided in that time. This was, it ended up blowing up so so good that I was kind of sad. It reminded me of a council that used to be definitely late eighties. I won't burden you with that. But I believe this group has huge potential. And I hate to see potential wasted on arguments of that could be settled. Zach, I'm sorry you feel that way about not sharing that with the Sean and staff. You got your reasons last night. I mean, I always thought staff would be very helpful. I never really relied on for decisions. I just relied on for giving you the information I needed. Same with Sean. I never really relied on anybody. I really didn't care what anybody thought. So get together. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ray. Is there anyone else? Anybody online? Want to say anything? Please raise your, use the raise hand feature. I haven't seen any either. Okay. I will seek a motion for adjournment at ten fourteen, please. Go by Fisher. All right, Rob. Call us in favor of adjournment if I can see an eye, please. Thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of your September.